Hello, hello.
Uh, yes, yeah, this one, and this is the, uh, the roots of the law.
Hello, I'm good.
I'll take, uh, I'll take one of those too.
Did you get my email?
Never mind.
You don't know this room. You know this room behind me. It's on. It's on, I've been in the building.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order, this is Highland Park City Council in person and virtual regularly scheduled for Tuesday. This is scheduled for Tuesday, June 20th at 7:00 PM. As far as opening ceremonies, I just wanted to congratulate the people who participated in the Juneteenth Parade. It was a wonderful exercise, and the community really needs activities like that. And for all of those who participated and supported it, thank you very much, your community thanks you. Madam, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Manica.
Here.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
Here.
Council President Thomas.
Here.
If all members have had an opportunity to take a look at the agenda, right now we'll move to item three, which is the approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I want to call a motion to walk on the agenda to hire a special counsel.
Okay, so Ms. So Ms. Martin, to do that, if you want to walk something on, you want to, you want to amend the agenda, and the item that you want to have brought on needs to be referenced. So you would like to either approve the agenda with an amendment, which is the appropriate way to do that.
Okay, so I want to approve the agenda with an amendment.
And that amendment would be?
I would like to walk on the agenda to hire a special outside counsel.
Special outside counsel specifically for what, ma'am? Because the other people in the room don't know.
For the issues that's going on between the executive branch and the legislative branch.
Bonafide dispute.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda with a walk-on. Where would, where would you like this item to go, ma'am?
Where is, is this a document?
It's here, do you have a document? Do you have anything for us to act on today?
No.
Okay, then that, that might be, that might be problematic, because in order for us to act on it, we actually have to have a document to act on. Has to be something for us to act on, we don't, we don't have anything right now. If you had something for us, then we could go ahead and put this up for a vote, but we don't have anything to vote on. Um, yeah, Ms. Martin, council wants to have a brief one-on-one. Go with us, ladies and gentlemen. Members that are seated, if you will look at item four, there is a typo for the approval of the minutes, it should be June 5th. You've already approved the May 1st minutes. Okay, Ms. Martin, the floor is still yours, you had opened the meeting up with a motion to approve the agenda, does that still stand?
I want to retract my statement.
Thank you so much, ma'am, but listen, if, if the legal department can provide you some assistance with generating those documents, it's a simple process, by getting it generated. Each member has an opportunity to amend the agenda if there's items that they want to put on there, at any time, at any meeting, is the place for that. So if she can help you get that together, we can do it. All right, thank you. So at this point, we're looking to entertain just a motion to get the agenda approved, so we can get the meeting underway, do we have a motion?
I want to make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to approve today's agenda, do we have?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Ashafi, can we please take the roll on this item?
Councilman Ashafi?
Hold on just one second, I'm sorry, Ms. Manica had her hand up, forgive me, Ms. Manica.
With the change, shouldn't it still be with the change?
I see, um, that is correct. So Ms. Martin, while you were talking to our attorney, I wanted to point out, for item four, the regular meeting, the minutes that need to be approved, there's a typo, it should be June 5th. It's recorded as May 1st. If everyone can make a note of that.
You said the 5th?
Yes, ma'am. That is a simple typo, I don't know if you need to have any legal wrangling, okay, thank you very much. So, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to approve the agenda, seconded by Councilman Ashafi. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, agenda is approved. Next item, item four is the approval of the minutes, so on the table right now is the approval of the proposed minutes for the in-person and virtual regular meeting for June 5th, 2023. The floor is open for members of council to take action on this.
I want to make a motion to approve of proposed minutes in-person and virtual regular meeting for May 5th of 2023.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin to approve the proposed minutes, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Martin, seconded by Councilwoman Manica, for the approval of the in-person and virtual meeting for June 5th. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you be kind enough to take the roll?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Mayor McDonald may speak to council, had to see if the mayor is joining us virtually. Madam Mayor, do you have an address?
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, good evening, citizens of Highland Park. Excuse me for not being there in person, I have another meeting that I'm going to jump on and, uh, real quickly, so I don't have much today. First, let me thank those that came out, uh, this past weekend for the Juneteenth event, it was very nice, it was a great celebration, so thank you for that. Also, I want to thank all of those who, uh, took the time out to come out to my coffee and conversation, uh, this past week, Wednesday. We had quite a few people at both sessions, uh, we're going to continue the momentum and continue to build. Also, those that came out on last Friday, last Saturday, for the Walk the City, thank you so much for taking your time out, uh, early in the morning to come out and walk and talk about what you see, what you want to see, and the process of getting it done. I also want to take time out to, uh, talk about the, the patching and, and Oakland Avenue project, which is going to be kicking off on, uh, the 26th. They will be working for the next hundred and, I think, forty days, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, uh, Monday through Saturday, so I want everyone to know that there'll be detours going on with that. Uh, or at possibly down to certain lanes, uh, patching has begun, I know, I want you guys to be patient, they're out there, they started. And so, right now, that is happening, also, grass cutting, it will continue, we do have finally the, uh, the equipment, uh, taken care of, there was quite a few pieces broke when we came in, so they, they had to be amended, and so that is happening, and they're continuing that. Let me see, oh, this, uh, Wednesday, please come out, I've had the opportunity to speak with the Secretary of State's office, Michigan Secretary of State's office, Jocelyn Benson. And she will be sending down her deputy chief, I mean deputy Secretary of State, to the chat with the chief. If you want to find out what is necessary for you to renew your license or reinstate your license, they'll be talking about that. Also, they'll be talking about mental illness and how the police can handle that when they come up against it, uh, out on a run. Kevin Fisher from NAMI will be coming out to speak to that, this is going to be very, very, very important. And so I hope you all come out to chat with the chief, 6:00 PM this Wednesday, over at the Hamilton Building, that will be very, very good. Jocelyn, like I said, Jocelyn Benson's office will be present, it's very good to be able to have these people coming to the city, they have not been coming, and I'm glad that we were ever able to communicate and bring them here. And so we will continue the process of having, uh, people from the state come in, or from the federal government as well, come in and talk to you guys, and partner with them, uh, we're very pleased with that. So, that's all I have today, um, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. So at this point, we have a section for citizens' participation, related specifically to agenda items, if you would take a look at the agenda for today. We have a tabled item related to a memorandum of understanding between the Wayne County Land Bank, is a police resolution for the purchase of an animal control vehicle. For the finance department, we have two items, there's a submission of the monthly financial statement and a resolution to accept the amended budget from the finance department and the mayor. We have an outside communication letter from the Parker Pride Alumni Association, those are the four items that are on the floor for citizens to speak about, right now, we'll offer you two minutes. At the end of our, our regular business here, once we get to item, uh, eight, we'll have another section for citizens' participation, it'll be wide open for citizens to, uh, drop their comments. I'm going to extend it out to three minutes, because two minutes is really not a lot of time, I really don't enjoy interrupting people when they're in the core of their, uh, discussion, so depending on when you want to address the body, you can do so now on a specific agenda item, or you could, forgive me, we're not supposed to even be operating our phones, so um, it depends on when you want to address city council, so you have an opportunity to do so on a specific agenda item, if it's related to a specific agenda item in the front, this is an opportunity for you to do that. But if it's a general comment, a general comment can be provided at the end of our regular business, and we can extend it a little bit more time, it's up to you, if you don't mind stating your name, please.
Ms. Frye.
How you doing, Ms. Frye?
Uh, dealing with the land bank, uh, understanding some of the things from the last, um, council meeting, and, um, the question I have, if the land bank can purchase land for $250, why can't that offer goes to, go to the citizen? And, uh, how are we to understand how they purchasing, saying, how's it benefiting Highland Park? But if they can purchase land for $250, why can't the citizens be offered the same opportunity? That's the question, and I'd like an answer, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, at some point, we'll try and direct that question to the people who could appropriately answer that question. Land sales are determined in the executive branch of our government, they're worked through the Community and Economic Development Department, and at some point later on, someone from Community and Economic Development might be able to address that specifically. Good evening, ma'am, how are you? Would you mind stating your name, please?
I'm fine, my name is Siandra McGee.
Ms. McGee, are you a resident of Highland Park?
Yes.
Thank you so much, ma'am, please go ahead.
So I'm not sure if this question should be held at the end, but it pertains to the land bank?
Okay.
But not so much of the purchase, but what about the houses that the land bank own that are in Highland Park that need to be demolished? Like I, um, live next door to a house that's been on the demolition list since 2020, February.
Do you have the address to that?
I do, I have pictures and the address.
Would you mind sharing it with me? I'd like to write it down.
Can you repeat your name for me, please? Siandra McGee. Siandra.
Yes, ma'am, could you give us that address, please?
Uh, it's 185 Hill and 181 Hill.
Thank you so much, we do have a CED, you said 185 and 1?
81.
81, we do have a CED director here, and, um, that is a excellent question, hopefully, we can get an answer for you today. Thank you so much for sharing, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. McGee.
Do we have any additional? Good evening, madam.
I am Commissioner Martha G. Scott, a resident here of Highland Park, but I represent two other cities. And I just want to speak on the demolition program that the county has. This is, um, batch number two of the Opera Dollars, these are federal dollars, and they were for specific reasons. There is a number of cities that have received these, and they're working on them now. But if not vote on this, it will go back, uh, or to another city. It wasn't easy getting this money in the first place, uh, there were a couple of my communities, uh, uh, county commissioners that wanted these dollars. And I got a call today, well, he had called several days ago, but I finally spoke to him today, a man named Mr. Anthony Tucker, is he here? Okay, invited him to come to the meeting, because he was calling me about blight removal in Wayne County. And he said that, uh, someone told him that the county handled, uh, that blight, so, so this is to help with the blight. So, um, I would hope that you all would do this, I know I have heard that people say it's vacant land, well, I have some vacant land, but vacant land has an address, okay? But it's a part of two, but at the end, yes, they will hold on to this until '25, that is the end of the Opera Dollars. And the, the properties will be returned back to the city, but they are working on these properties right now. We didn't have anybody else that came up to the plate that was going to, uh, do these properties for Highland Park. So we voted for the land bank, uh, to do these properties for Highland Park, and if you got my latest newsletter, it indicated that on the front page about these properties that we voted on.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question, please?
Certainly.
When did you allot these funds or get these funds for the city of Highland Park?
Oh, I think it was, um, on this, I, I sent this to you.
Yes, ma'am.
3/1/2023.
In March.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
I got a question.
Sure.
Um, Ms. Scott, the package in which they gave us here at the last council meeting, they made it clear that they would not be returning the property, that they would be purchasing it from us for $250, and they were going to demo it and keep the property, I got a problem with that.
Perhaps they didn't give you all the information, I spoke to them today.
Okay.
And I said to them that at the end of these Opera Dollars, 2025, it must be returned back to the city of Highland Park.
All right.
And they agreed to that. You know, I've been out for a long time.
I know you have.
And in this political arena, and there are certain ways that you have to do things.
That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
I know that you all are new.
That's right.
But it's a learning tree for you, okay?
That's why I asked the question, Ms. Scott, because I knew I get it.
I've learned over these sixty years, I have to fight for these dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes.
I can't keep fighting if we can't work together, all right?
Amen.
So I do appreciate that you all will do this and do it right, do it soon, because I was told that, you know, they extended it, because I asked them to.
Nice.
All right, because I was, I was, I came at the last meeting, but it was, I came a little late, like I was a little late just now, there's always somebody calling you, get on the phone and stuff. But, um, uh, it was so crowded, and I'd had a cold, and I just didn't want to push myself in this crowd, all right?
I totally see.
But anyway, I'm here to say today, please do it, all right? And you, you'll get all your land bank, it'll be cleared, and the county will continue to help Highland Park, they've been helping Highland Park for a long time. And tomorrow, you were on the agenda for economic development for the, um, um, the community center. And back of that, you got some dollars from me, you got the whole 50,000 that I get for parks, okay? And so, but it will not be on the agenda tomorrow, because they had to postpone the meeting, but in two weeks, we will vote on that in committee, and you will get the funds, all right?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Scott. Always a pleasure.
Thank you all, love you, but we got to work together, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, because I'm going to stay here, all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Much is given, much is required.
Yes.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, glad to have you.
Glad to be here.
Do we have? Do we have any additional comments during, for agenda items during the meeting? Smart. Seeing none, seeing no additional hands, we will move on into the actual agenda.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Um, point of order before we move on to the next agenda?
Please.
I was wondering if legal could, um, show me where in the charter, or in the bylaws, that, um, we are required, um, to submit our motions in writing. Because Ms. Martin, she made a motion, uh, to amend, uh, the agenda, and the motion was struck down based on the fact that she didn't bring any paperwork for adding that item onto the agenda.
That's not exactly correct, what I said is that if she could get, if she could get something in writing?
Okay, but
Then we could have that to vote on.
Again, I know that, uh, I know that, uh, legal did speak of this matter, and they spoke in private, I'm just wondering if legal could tell me exactly where in the charter or bylaws that is a requirement for council members?
Ms. Burden?
Yes, under the section for law department, there's a requirement for us to either review or prepare ordinances, resolutions, or legal documents.
Under legal?
Yes.
In the charter?
Yes.
Okay, hold on a second.
I want to say seven
What, seven, five?
I'm not looking at, I usually have my charter with me, but it's under the legal department.
Okay.
And it's required that we review or prepare all ordinances, resolutions, or legal documents, so
Okay, I didn't hear motions, though.
Because Ms. Martin made a motion. How can we make a motion on an item when we don't have anything to vote on?
Okay, I understand that, I'm just, I'm asking the question.
So we vote, council speaks through its resolutions, or its ordinances, you speak in writing, so that's why you have resolutions that are presented to you by the various departments, because that's how council speaks, and that's how the clerk records documents. So orally, it would just be something that's in the minutes, but it, it would be no document.
Okay.
Or it would be something that we would need to review, whether or not we agree with it, but it's supposed to be reviewed by the legal department.
Okay, okay.
And so, you know, us preparing a document declaring a bona fide dispute is probably not going to, you know, happen like that, however
Mr. President?
We got to find out what the bona fide dispute is.
I need a moment.
And it's so general, so put something in writing.
Okay, all right, I'm going to read through, uh, seven, five, I'll come back to you.
We could get, while we wait here for Ms. Martin, uh
Seven, five, six. It says, "One of the duties of the Department of Law says to prepare or review all ordinances, contracts, bonds, and other written instruments which are submitted by the city council or by the officers and boards in matters of a legal nature relating to the affairs of the city." Then you have the C, which she is apparently declaring some sort of bona fide dispute, but, you know, it's not anything in writing to determine what the dispute But, you know, it's not anything in writing to determine what the dispute is. She's just saying, okay, this is differences between the legislative branch and the um, administrative branch. So, you know, that's why you put things in writing, so you'll have more detail. If she could bring it up next week.
Yeah.
We're not trying to, we're just trying to go through the proper procedure.
To make sure that it's done properly. If you look at all of the legal documents that we've had to review since we took office, there's typically a page, page and a half, giving a legal description of what the, the complaint is, or what the legal matter is. It's, it's stretched out in almost old English. It's typically a page, page and a half in many cases. And it specifies what the actual issue is that's being decided by the court or being brought up by the court.
Okay, so um, Ms., Ms. Burton?
Yes.
This is actually, according to this charter, what Ms. Martin did is actually not a legal issue yet, okay? It's, it's, it's not a legal issue. It does not have to be placed in writing. She does have the authority to make this motion, and it should be considered. That's what I'm clearly saying. She has the right to have it considered. You two did not have the right to boot it, and I need y'all to follow the rules. According to Robert's Rules of Order, this is also not a legal issue, and she has the right to make the motion, and you guys need honor that.
If you're trying to bring in another attorney.
All, all we're trying to do is open the door for discussion. All she's trying to do is open the door for discussion.
Yes, sir. So let's assume that we were able to get that on the agenda, and let's assume that we were able to act on it. How would we, without a record of it, show any activity? How would we, without a resolution, be able to take that forward to support council member's desire to get legal counsel? What will we, what will we be basing that on if we don't have anything in writing? And so what we, what I'm hoping, I really don't have an issue with what Ms. Martin wants to do. What I'm hoping is that we have something that can support what she is trying to do in writing. Each of us, if we had something, a resolution that we wanted to bring forward, we would need to have that in writing to identify what it actually is, so that some action could be taken on it. Without it, we don't, we don't have anything. We don't even have anything to present to support the bona fide dispute. So it would be a good idea to have that, and she is more than welcome to bring that issue before city council and to walk it on the agenda or to add it to the agenda, the list of agenda items prior to a council meeting, so it doesn't have to be walked on. She does have that latitude. So that, that's an option as well. There's, there's nothing prohibiting her from moving forward. We just want to make sure that because of procedural issues that we've had here in this council on a number of occasions, to support uh, proper procedure, good governance, and to make sure that we have the documents necessary to move whatever the um, issues are forward that council members would like to discuss.
Okay, so, 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 Council President, all I'm simply saying is, is that according to the rules, Ms. Martin has the right to make the motion. We have the right to vote on it. Then we open up the discussion for while there is a bona. And then we can put something in writing at a next meeting. We're not voting to hire tonight. We are voting to discuss. We are voting to open the door to discussion, and you guys literally slammed it shut.
No, sir. If we look at the agenda right here, we have four items. We have something in our packet for each of these items. We have something in our packet for each of those items.
Council can vote to have something placed on the agenda without it being in writing. They can vote to have something placed on the agenda. It's been done here a thousand times. I watched our predecessors do it a thousand times. They've opened the door to a discussion.
This is us.
Okay.
So we have to write it out.
They have opened the door to the discussion, and the discussion leads to paperwork. We, we, we're not trying to hire anybody tonight. We want the door open for the discussion.
Okay, so let's move on to uh, thank you so much for your point of order. That can be further addressed. I would encourage you both to pursue more conversations with the Legal Department. They can give you better direction. There's always room to walk an item on the agenda if you feel like you want to. There's always room to do that. We just want to make sure that, like each of these other items on the agenda, there's a piece of paper that corresponds to it, so that when we take action, it's undergirded by our actual votes, so you can move forward with it. You only need three votes to move an item forward. It'd be a good idea to actually have the document ready, so they can prepare that for you, if you'd like to do so.
Okay.
So, so, next item, tabled item, Resolution for Memorandum of Understanding Between Highland Park and Wayne County Land Bank. This item was tabled in the last meeting. There were a number of different issues that required members of council to push back on making a decision at that time. This tabled item is um, we're open to have members decide what they want to do for item five, which is the Resolution for Memorandum of Understanding Between Highland Park and the Wayne County Land Bank. Madam Pro Tem?
Yes, we would just hand it a new memorandum. Can somebody read this and explain it?
Before we do that, though, we have.
Wait, wait, we gotta.
We have to bring it off the table. We have to bring this on the table.
So let's bring it off the table, please.
To you, why did this memorandum change?
So, so, Ms., Ms. Manica?
I move to bring the tabled item, Resolution for Memorandum of Understanding Between Highland Park and Wayne County Land Bank on the table.
We have a motion on the floor to bring item five, the Resolution for Memorandum of Understanding Between Highland Park and Wayne County Land Bank, back to the table for Ms. Manica. Do we have support?
I second with a lot of discussion.
We have a second from Council Pro Tem with a fair amount of discussion. Um, Madam Deputy Kirk, would you be kind enough to take the role?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin, just for the discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, this is a bring back from the table.
Oh, yes, I bring it back from the table.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. So the item is back on the table. It's open for discussion. Ms. Square, if you wanted to bring us some clarification on the updated document that we received? Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
That, that extra document you got is just an FYI. Because one of the issues that we had at the previous meeting was there was no development, strategic development for this M O U. And in order to get it done, we need to get our developers, because we've got all sorts of developers looking at various parcels in the city. And uh, the charter says that you, in order to sell it below market rate, you have to have a development. And the lady that came up earlier talking about these two hundred and fifty-dollar lots, she's right. So we can't just sell them off for two hundred and fifty dollars because there's no development. We also have two ordinances, two oh eight point ten and two oh eight point eleven, that talk about disposition of city property from vacant lots to, and they all say basically the same thing. You, you've got to do a development in order to be able to move these parcels. So this was a discussion about eighty-one parcels that the Wayne County Land Bank uh, wanted to tear down. And in return for tearing them down, we were gonna sell them to them for two hundred and fifty dollars. I'm glad to hear that Commissioner Scott had a talk to them. Because clearly, one of our problems with, was with them keeping the property. And so maybe we can, if we could get that in writing, uh, I think that would be something for us to look at. But what I gave you tonight was back in twenty nineteen, the Wayne County Land Bank and the State Land Bank formed a partnership to develop these properties. And so that, if we could get that deal resuscitated, then you've got your demolition and your development at the same time. I know that Mr. Hinton has numerous developments, and some of you have inquired about some developers who are interested in developing various parcels of the city, which is all readily available if they could just come forward, perhaps get in a consortium with the city. We've got all of our parcels. The Wayne, the two land banks have already agreed to form a group with us to develop parcels. And when I say develop parcels, I mean put infill housing in, so that we just don't have more vacant lots in the city. This, what I gave you tonight, I'm just giving you that because we need to deal with that in another meeting. We need to get the land banks in here to talk about how the city and, and, and they can get together. And then you have an M O U for demolition and development that would comply with the charter. Um, now, this did get sent to Mr. Cartwright over at the Wayne County Land Bank. And he's not here tonight because he was going to give it to his corporation council, and they weren't gonna have enough time to review it for tonight. But he also stated that there is a phase two for demolition, so that we wouldn't miss the boat. And even though we weren't ready now, that there's a phase two that we could get ready for, if we could tie this demo, this development into the demolition, then you got a, a demolition and development plan. So that's what this is. And um, that, I gave you a copy of that because we probably need to schedule that sometime in July. And uh, and then Ty Hinton has a number of developers uh, that we uh, you know, that have been asking. I think, Ms. Robinson, you had one that, I think it was the Romero Group. A lot of that portion of the northern part of District Three, they were interested in. And there's some state property that we, they probably need, and um, and the land bank property. So this is a really an opportunity to take advantage of this program and to get everybody in, into the, into the room and really, you know, get them torn down and get them built kind of at the same time. And then there may be some other stuff we could ask about. There's some big structures in town we need to get down and State Land Bank on. But if we could all get to a table and uh, start at this council, um, I think we may be able to, to get a deal out of this. So that's all I, but, you know, I looked into that after the last meeting, and I dug this up.
Madam Pro Tem?
For the record, I have no idea who the Romero Group is. I have nothing to do with that.
Okay.
And can you define piecemeal ownership?
Well, what that means is, you know, it's a patchwork. So you have many areas where the state owns a property, then the land bank owns a property here, and then the city owns a property. And it really isn't conducive to development because it's all patch and putting it together, and then you, it just, nobody's working together. And so it's just not really getting done, it's not getting done. Because it's just too much, and everybody's on, you know, the, the, the State Land Bank will sell whoever they want to sell to, and Wayne County won't sell at all, and then the city's not selling anything. And it's just approaches, it's very difficult to develop. So it might be, I mean, it's worth talking to them to see if you can turn this into a demolition and develop. So I just.
So this is the first phase because as far as the ARPA, ARPA investment, the Highland Park is seven point five million?
You know, one of the questions we asked was, you know, because it never came to us. So we don't really know, because we never got a copy of, I never got it. So I don't know who it went to, but I never read what the terms were. I know that Wayne County Land Bank got ARPA money. I know that, you know, the ARPA money, the city only got a million dollars of ARPA, that's it. Cause we didn't, we weren't eligible. They got six hundred and fifty million. And so, you know, I really don't know, but I know there is a timetable, like the commissioner said, up until twenty-twenty-five. That's why Mr. Cartwright said there's a phase one and phase two. But uh, we, we just want to do a deal that's, that it complies with the charter and all the ordinances. And uh, and we want the deal done, and, and, you know, we, the city needs to be involved too, because if there's gonna be a development, then you're gonna need the, you know, water department's gonna have to put in new lines, and you're gonna have to, you're gonna need curb gutter, street. Um, because some of these streets don't have any properties on them. Some of them are, you know, two or three properties are gonna tear down, it's whole streets in some instances. Now, there are some dangerous parcels. I think that those need to be dealt with, and maybe they can be dealt with another way. But we did actually also go through the list, and some of the eighty-one parcels had already been demolished. And so it took the list down, and we did check the titles on them, and then Wayne. And then there's another big list, a big giant list that's put on, we still have to fill it in, but we kind of put everything, council probably needs a copy of this, so you can actually see who owns what and how it's piecemeal. It's so much property that uh, we just have to be careful that Wayne County doesn't own more property than the city owns.
That's right.
Okay, one last question, because it's several lists. We have the city of Highland Park own parcels.
Yep.
We have dangerous building parcel list.
Yes.
And we have a demolish, demolition list.
Right.
And none of those houses are on the list that's been proposed to the city council.
Yeah, and, and that's a question for Ty, uh, because they, you know, again, we went through the list, and some of the houses on the list had already been torn down. So it's, it's a lot. And we just need to make sure that we're complying with, with the charter. And, and, and I'm glad to hear that they don't want to buy the properties. Because that, then that's, that steps, if they don't want to buy the properties, we could just let them tear them down. But our problem in this M O U that we have is they want to buy them for two hundred and fifty dollars each.
Yeah. We're gonna need that in writing, uh, Ms. Square, that they're going to return the property.
Yeah, and maybe we could probably get that. And then that would be, you know, then we don't have a problem. They, you know, they're just using ARPA money to tear the properties down. We can just move forward. We still probably should sit down with the land banks and talk about how we're gonna develop, because we'd like to see some development. We'd like to see some, some townhouses, some houses filled into the city. That's so we can get some people in the city.
So how would you, before we go, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, how would you uh, propose that we deal with item five? Now that we have an open discussion, is this something that you'd like to move potentially to a workshop in the coming weeks?
I think we should move it to a workshop. We should get them in, sit down. I know that there's a request for a workshop for the blight ordinance in July.
Yeah, we have a, I have a list of things that I wanted to put on the workshop.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put too many things on the workshop, but I would, there's a couple workshops. But then we can get them in, we can get all the people in and talk about really how to have a, how to demolish and build at the same time. So.
So for today, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, you have?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, my first question is, have we considered any other type of developers or demolished companies?
There, there, there's a long list of developers that have been, I was mistaken with Councilmember uh, Robinson. But I know that there are numerous developers that have come into the city wanting property to develop. Uh, a lot of this property is vacant property. Uh, some of it needs to be torn down, some of it needs to be rehabilitated. I mean, this is Highland Park. This is a developer's dream.
Right, right.
So they're, they're coming in. Ty has, has countless, and before Ty, the previous administration had countless developers. Mostly, they want stuff for nothing.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, it, again, if you get them all at the table, you sit down, and you, and you, you figure, you do the deal, uh, just like we did the Means Group. That was an orchestrated deal. They're still waiting to get a tenant over there. It was a multi-city deal between two cities, hundreds of parcels. But I think it's a great opportunity. We, we need to grow, and if we get everybody in, then I think it's a great opportunity for the council really to have a good initiative to sink their, sink their teeth into, to move forward. And this Wayne County demolition is like the kickstart of it. So in order to do that, though, you need some development to go with it.
So Ms. Square, is, so is that a yes, we did consider, or no, we haven't considered? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, your question again?
Yeah. Are you saying that we, we have considered other developers and demolition companies, or are you saying we haven't?
We generally don't do the demolition. So usually, the county, that most of the demolition in Highland Park has been C D B G demolition. So the county took our C B D G money a few years ago, and they do the demolition. They don't put a whole lot of money into it. This is an opportunity with a lot of money. Uh, we've had previous demolitions that would, uh, we had the hardest hit, which Councilman Ashafi talks about.
Right.
And that was where they kept a lot of property. We had to deed it over to them. They kept some of it, most of it. And they still have it. It's in their land bank. We have, right now, I'm just gonna give you some numbers. We have three hundred and six properties in the State Land Bank, according to this list, and two hundred and twenty-two in the Wayne County Land Bank.
Two hundred and twenty-two?
That's according to this list.
Okay. And then my next question is, um, the top ten houses on that list, I, I hope I'm saying the street right, but is it B E R F O R D?
Beersford.
Beersford, there we go. Um, one of those houses, there, it's no longer there. So it's not even lined on the list or taken off the list. I didn't see it at all.
That's, you know, after the council meeting, I heard everybody, and I went back and did the due diligence. That's, you know, after the council meeting, I heard everybody and I went back and did the due diligence and I checked the list. I had the, before we sell any properties, we have a. Uh, a special program with Wayne County where we check the the titles. Because sometimes property says the city of Highland Park owns it and they don't. There may be a lien, there may be a lien on the property. So we've we've sold, we've been sued, sold people property that we didn't even own. So we checked that, now, this was the list that they came back with. And they have all these checked off. But, um, again, this is a, you know, Ty and his staff, they can, you know, recheck that, what address is that? That you have for Beersford?
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
I've got sixty three Beersford, ninety eight, two fifteen and two fifteen, there's three of them.
And one seventy two Hill, there's a lot.
One seventy two Hill.
And one seventy two Hill?
Yes. Glasses on.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
Why Ms. Square is looking at that? I went out to all of the properties that was listed as torn down already. Those properties have been looked at, I took pictures, we know that those are, have been demolished, they have been demolished. Uh, since that list was created, so those properties have been removed. Uh, Mr. Hinton is removing those properties that are on the list that is no longer there. So I personally went out into the neighborhoods and looked for those properties.
Sixty three out of nine.
Yeah.
And for for some of the citizens that are in in the room to understand, we're in June. And a lot of this is a bleed over from the end of the last administration, these lists were prepared. And forwarded out to CED and almost nothing occurred in the last six to eight months.
This is kind of like sausage making because it's ongoing. And we know that there are ninety one properties that the county is tearing down. So that that Beersford address is not on the city's list, it may be a property that's owned by Wayne County. Um, but I'll give you this, I can send you this electronic where you can look at it. Um, but it's, again, that's that's what piecemeal is. It's just little, it's a, it's a huge job. And it would probably be in our best interest to sit down with the way with the land banks. And come up with a development strategy in conjunction with these demolitions. Because they have already agreed to it back in twenty nineteen, so we just need to agree. But that's all I have.
Let me take some quick notes for work for the workshop, so the workshop would have a more accurate list?
The 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 list is ongoing because this, the list I have is the city's list.
Okay, and so then there are obviously more than.
So Wayne County is operating on another list, they're tearing down properties all the time in the city that they own. They tear them down without us knowing that they're tearing them down.
Yeah, I've I've seen that.
And so it'd be nice to know if they were tearing them down and know who's tearing down what. And kind of work together with them on, you know.
So those three cross, so so just one question too, just for. Today for item five, we took it off the table, we're discussing it right now, your recommendation would be what?
I would say that we need to take into consideration what Commissioner Scott said tonight.
Okay.
Absolutely, because she talked to somebody today. That's right, she absolutely, she she talked to somebody today and we probably need to get whatever they said.
In writing.
In front of us so that we can take it under consideration. Uh, because we can always have a special meeting.
Agreed.
Um, and so we think we need to get that, so I'll have legal get with follow up with Commissioner Scott so she can get that document. Because the document that you have now is selling them the property. Um, and so we we definitely need a new document, so let it, it can come back from the table. Uh, and then, you know, we just hold it until we receive the other information.
So it sounds to me as if there is, I know, Ms. Martin, you had a question, it sounds to me as if this item needs to be, Ms. Hispanic, needs to be removed from. The agenda for today and brought back.
And then it can be put back on.
Okay, so if we have any additional questions and we can, we can deal with removing this item until we can get a more polished package. What last question I have for you is, you said about a special meeting, do we have any hard dates that we have to adhere to moving forward?
According, according to Mr. Cartwright, he said there was a phase two.
Phase two is.
But 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 we, but we probably need to to get it together so that it's ready for whenever that may occur.
Okay, so I'll target the first meeting of July.
To get together as soon as possible.
Okay.
Um, but I think we could do it.
Okay, Ms. Manic, I'm sorry, you had a question?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, one, so I I want to be clear because it sounds like you're you you're having a special meeting.
No, we're not sure, no, no, we're not sure, you said if 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 in an emergency we could, if we were up against a hard day.
Okay, so again, it sounds like we need a workshop.
Yes.
Or are we going to have a workshop? And if so, in the workshop, will we discuss things like the brownfield tax credits? Will we discuss water sewage?
No, we're not discussing that stuff, what what we're trying to do is. Commissioner Scott came up here and said she's got some revisions.
Right.
And one of the big revisions is they don't need to buy the property, right?
Correct.
We need to get that because what you have right here is you selling them the property.
Right.
And so as soon as we get that, we can have a meeting.
Right, the goal being demolition, correct?
That's right, the other issue though is. Because remember, the charter and the ordinance violation is if you, if you're selling property. If you're selling property, you got to have a development.
That's right.
What she has said is, we're not selling. Okay, well, let me sit down and have you say what you said.
The resolution that you have before you needs to be finalized tonight. You were worried about your land. I said the ARPA dollars in in twenty five and then you would get your land bank. But yes, there is, there is an amount, it's what's in that resolution is what you need to bid on tonight. Now Highland Park has been had this vacant land for umpteen years, okay? And you haven't did anything with it. But I fought to get these ARPA dollars and this is batch two, the ARPA Dollar Project. And if it's not done tonight, it will go someplace else.
Yes, ma'am.
You all have had this opportunity, I have never been called to be a part of anything. But I fought with my colleagues because I told them that my city needed this development. And you have to tear down in order to get some development. The county has been working with you ever since I've been there, okay?
Yes, ma'am, would you, would we be able to?
But it's up to you all, if you don't want to, then it's up to you.
Yes, ma'am, well, if they voted on this tonight, will we be able to get that hard document that Ms. Square was referring to within? This is the the confirmation of what you verbally told us tonight, would they be able to send something like that to satisfy members' concerns?
I believe so, because I talked to them today.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Commissioner. So when they tear the parcels down and all this stuff down, we can't build until we get our land back in twenty twenty five?
I don't know, you got some land now you're not building on, okay? So all I'm saying is, let's take one step at a time. Because we haven't been working together, the former city council had voted on this already. But I don't know, you got a charter now that's, I don't know, it's half crazy to me.
So if the, if the council voted on this previous to us, why is it back in front of you?
I don't know why it's back in front of you, evidently you didn't move on it, it hadn't been moved down properly.
It's execution, we're at the execution phase right now.
So is this something separate, Mr. Hinton, you're sitting there, can you answer some of these questions for us, please? Thank you. They're asking questions that somebody has to have an answer to, it's not our preview, it's mayor and it's the economic development. So you would know what happened with the first resolution, if it was the same one or a different one. It was several questions up here, I think, that would come from you to be answering.
Okay, what questions do you have?
Was, is this the same resolution?
Same resolution.
From when?
Same MOU.
From when?
That was tabled from last time.
No, no, no. So Commissioner Scott, that is the same one from our predecessors, that means, so that's what I'm asking. Well, actually, uh, Council, Councilwoman was asking, but that's the question, is this the same one?
We never.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll wait.
Okay, we never.
No, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Hinton, I'll wait on Councilman, because she, because we're having a discussion here.
It was never until recently, a MOU to vote on. So the MOU that you have before you is what we have crafted, we've been back and forth, back and forth on it, okay? And that's the item that got tabled last time.
Okay, so I don't know what other questions my councilmen and councilwomen have, but I feel like. I don't have enough answers, I feel like there's too many different parts here. Because I hear it's a resolution that was with the predecessors that already, they already agreed on it. So I don't understand why we're agreeing on it and then you're still talking about the last meeting, you're you're not up to speed with me right now. And I need you to.
Let me, let me be very, very clear.
Okay.
The previous council never voted on a memorandum of understanding, that's what I'm told, okay? And that would be the document, the, it's not a contract as such, memorandum of understanding. You know, you have certain legal standing, but a lot, not a lot. So this was done so that we could get that item before you, for you to vote on. The agreement between Wayne County Land Bank and the city of Highland Park. One other thing you should know, the money didn't come to us, there was no grant as such to us, okay? That money went to the Wayne County Land Bank to administer on our behalf.
Okay, so my question now is, are we voting on a MOU or are we voting on an agreement?
So this is right, right in front of us, we have a resolution.
I see the memorandum in front of us, but that's not what Mr. Hinton just said in his sentence. So I'm trying to be clear and clarify because to me, if we don't have a specific date. And if we don't have, if if no one's here, so I have somebody saying that. Cartwright said that he'll come back to us, so does that actually mean today is the last day? If 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 he can come back to us, then today's not the last day. Then the second part of this is, is that I understand and I'm listening to sentences, I'm not over talking him, I'm listening. And so I need understanding because to me it seems like this needs to be sent to a workshop or to a special meeting for us to finish. Because there's a lot of unanswered questions, like I know we have property that we haven't developed. But they have property that they own that we gave them before that they have not developed, am I correct?
That is correct. Yeah, so.
So therefore, I need to know how long they've had their property, because if they had it too long, then it already comes back to us, according to the charter. Depending on how long they've had it. So again, my, I have no problem with development, I have no problem with. Any of things happening and we making things happen, but I have a problem with things coming unclear, undefined. And you want me to say yes, and then at the end of the day, in all essence, it wasn't my decision, it was, I wasn't out there looking at the buildings. Because somebody wasn't out there looking at the buildings or we wouldn't have a new list.
So let me, let me, let me interject here for just a quick second, because there are a lot of people in the audience who don't, you guys don't get our packet. You don't know what documents we have in front of us and I want to just try to provide a little bit of clarity. So a memorandum of understanding is an agreement between two or more parties outlining a formal document. It is not necessarily legally binding, which depends on the signatory's intent. And the language in the agreement, but signals the willingness of the parties to move forward with the contract. The MOU can be seen as a starting point for negotiations as it is defined, as it defines the scope and purpose of the talks. Such memorandum are most often seen in treaties and high stakes business deals. So just explaining to the audience, what we're doing is we are saying, the city. Of Highland Park and the Wayne County Land Bank. Are trying to move forward on a project, that's what that memorandum of understanding actually means, just wanted to provide the definition for those people. Ms. Al Shafi, I am, before you go, Ms. Al Shafi, I'm I'm willing to, since we have had a shift in focus here. It might be worth it to read this document, this is the document that we're signing off on, this is the MOU that the commissioner is asking us to take action on today. So it might be worth reading this document.
I have not seen that MOU that you're talking.
That's the point, that's why I think it's a good idea that I read.
This is what I voted on.
Yes, ma'am, that, yes, ma'am, within the county's framework, but we received item five for us on our packet list. Is a copy of the MOU and it might be worth reading it so that members can hear it again, so that people in the audience can hear it. And get a little bit more further explanation on what it's actually asking for. And then you'll, it might be, it might provide additional clarity as to what. Ms. Square was saying, the fact that the issue with this MOU is that we didn't have a development specifically outlined. And based on the charter, which you said does have some issues, it will be appropriate to, for us to have a development plan. In alignment with the transfer of any property, even if it's for a short period of time, for us to be legally. In alignment with our ordinances and with the charter. So if it doesn't, if people don't, don't mind, I'll read this document, it's not that long. And then if we have questions about that, then for for members to actually act on, then we can decide what we want to do. The recommendation from the city's business manager was to not take action tonight because there is a phase two. And to wait and have a more polished document that members can accept, that has a list that is accurate. So that when we bring something forward, the document that we sign. Includes an accurate list of the properties in question, at least two members here have pointed out that there are properties on the current list. That are vacant already, the county has already demolished them, so for for clarity, I think that might be the most appropriate way to go. I'm willing to read this document now so that we can get it out there, do members have any issue at all, we'll be reading the MOU as it stands?
I think that we've already read the MOU.
Okay.
Last time. And.
We did, yeah, we did, the five of us, the five of us.
We've already read this, and.
Yes, ma'am.
The council can take on a conditional approval, because it's, it's.
I was just about.
Ms. Al Shafi, you had.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I was, I was just about to say that, let's cut the baby in half. Let, let, I'll tell you, let's simply just amend this right now and be done with it, let's go. Okay, if I am willing to consider this document if paragraph one, section B is removed. The two hundred and fifty dollar purchase. I'm willing to consider it if that particular item is removed from this memorandum of understanding right now.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi to accept or to approve the resolution for memorandum of understanding. Between the city of Highland Park and Wayne County Land Bank pending the removal of item B. From section one. Under the description of the project and the scope of collaboration, do we have a second on that?
I have a second with a question.
We have a second from Councilwoman Manic.
With a question before we actually go. Can you actually, can we actually amend that part and remove it?
The problem is that it's the county's document.
Right.
So they're going to have to approve that. So this is why in our best interest, they have to come in.
Okay.
And we meet with them and.
All right.
Talk about these development strategies. You know what the.
Show me the ground here.
With the commissioner has said tonight.
I rescind my motion.
Thank you.
Yeah. Exactly, exactly.
So a conditional approval, we have another meeting, get them all in here and see if we can get a deal.
Okay, so can, you will, you will recommend that we go forward with the conditional approval or?
Conditional approval, taking into consideration what the commissioner said tonight. And then there were some other minor issues. Because we're not selling the property. I didn't say, I didn't say that. That was what I got up to say. It's, it's what the county is already, the money went to the land bank, okay? And the land bank said that they would do this.
Right.
The commissioners and we had to vote on.
Yes.
And what we voted on was this package that I that I had, I don't know about you. So evidently your charter will not allow you to do what you need to do. That well, and that's why we we wanted to try to make it work. Try to make it work with some development.
The other option.
A demo deal and then it works.
The other option is adding a number seven pending provisions and assurances from Wayne County.
At the end of the day, if the money was earmarked for us. At the end of the day, uh, if the money was earmarked for us, we, the county doesn't have a whole lot of cities like Highland Park, hundreds and hundreds of properties that they need to manage. Highland Park is unique. And so I think that, um, conditional approval, we can work that.
Members, again, for item seven, a, a conditional approval, adding a number seven, which is pending provisions and assurances from the county. Any input?
I moved the table for 24 hours.
For 24 hours?
Yeah. Yeah, we can have a special meeting tomorrow.
Uh, uh, I'm not available for a special meeting tomorrow.
Okay, and that's the end of that discussion. I take it back.
So.
Again.
Go ahead, could you repeat?
Adding, adding item seven. So we have items four, five, six. Item seven would be pending provisions and assurances from Wayne County.
Pending provisions.
Okay, we got some feedback with Tlaki. If you could get us the volume on that, we have some feedback in there. So members, again, for number seven, this is a modified document. It will be, it will be up to members to make this change. We're an item seven pending provisions, pending provisions and assurances from Wayne County.
It's a conditional approval.
Conditional approval.
That way we stay, it's an M O U, it's a document that we're going to work on. The commissioner has got some representations. We know that there's some things in there that need to be worked on. We know that there is a development arm that's already been formed. Maybe we can make it work. Can we just let it swing off?
Yeah, and remember, remember, council, the wrecking ball contracts, that's still us. So a lot of this can't happen, even if we give them a conditional or provisional approval tonight, there are other pieces of this that have to come back to this body.
It's not a final approval.
Exactly, so condition. So again, adding an item seven, if that will work, again, that's pending provisions and assurances from Wayne County. Mr. Al Shafi has given a list of those items that he wanted to make sure were included. One is property ownership reverting back to the city or not being sold. But we have a verbal agreement from the county commissioner who stated that that was verbally agreed upon, because we don't have the name of that person or any specifics in writing. Uh, we cannot just give it approval without saying, adding an item seven to this resolution, pending provisions and assurances from Wayne County in writing. So members, having that said, I'm gonna turn this over to members to decide how we deal with item five that has come off the table.
Uh, no. So we can't do a special meeting. Uh, it's gotta be approved tonight. Yeah, exactly, exactly, e- e- exactly, and. Yeah, it's gotta be, uh, conditions. And I am very leery when it comes to Wayne County. I am very leery. Okay, they have never been a good steward.
So why can't we possibly look at another demo company then?
So, no, 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 it's, it, we only got, it's the county. We, we in Wayne County, we don't got another county. It's, it's our county. It's actually doing this for us. So. So this is, this is an issue from the last meeting that I think that members are very passionate about, obviously. Um, we can see the development occurring around us. You can't drive down Woodward Avenue without seeing cranes in the air, and that is a sign of a prosperous city. That is the one true indicator of prosperity in a city. Are there cranes moving? Is something coming down or is something going up? And so I, I understand that all members present would like to see some development activity uh, move forward in the city. And like it or not, we have to bring partners in, because for a city that takes in $9.6 million with a $9.2 million budget, that $400,000 doesn't cover a lot when it comes to emergencies and fire trucks and all of that good stuff, so.
I think the conditional approval, that's the county know that, you know, we're working on it still. We want it. We don't want to, you know, just come off. Ty has a long list of the demo companies, don't you, Ty? You've met some of them. Funny, smoking. And, you know, if the money was earmarked by the park, then, well, we have a conditional approval. That means we want our money. And so, um.
So I'll put that, I'll put that back out on the floor to members. So this is conditional approval for this resolution, adding an item seven, pending provisions and assurances from Wayne County in writing. So at this point, again, I'm turning it over to the members. Uh, act as you will. The county commissioner is gone. It's pretty much up to us what we do with this, or it dies on the floor.
So what I was asking, um, so that we can do.
This is definitely going to a workshop.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What I was asking, we go, so that we can make a vote, do a vote for this, along with number seven, adding that it complies with the section in our charter, so that we have to comply with the charter, just plain.
Yes, ma'am. And so just, just for. Yes, so, so, so again, that, I picked that statement because it was an umbrella statement. It's kind of ubiquitous, but it does allow for what we're asking for, and that is pending the provisions in writing and assurances in writing from Wayne County. Disposition, this is, uh, from section nine fifteen, and to try to disposition the real property held by the city when the city has acquired any property to protect the city's tax lien thereof, the owner of any interest therein, by fee title or mortgage or as a vendor or vendee under the land contract shall have the right to purchase the city's interest therein, appoint payment to the city of the amount of money which the city has invested therein in the form of unpaid taxes, special assessments, charges, fees and penalties, interest and cost. After the lapse of 90 days after the, the, uh, date the city acquires the titles or any such property, the city council may determine such property is needed or should be devoted to public purposes, naming such purposes or purpose or purposes, or may sell the same at any price which shall not be less than the market value as determined and certified by an assessor. The issue of market value was brought up in a previous meeting by Councilman Al Shafi, and then the issue that we all have to understand is that, again, we're trying to create a framework that makes it conducive for other people to bring their money to Highland Park and develop for the benefit of the city. Um, we have some input from.
The engineer.
From the engineer for the city.
Now, usually Kathy intervenes, but today I'm interviewing. All right, here. All I want you to understand is the devil is in the details, okay? And there are, as she stated, there's a lot of detail. I heard, I, I got the list. I looked at the list. I've reviewed the list. There are things, old list, new list, properties demo, and all of that. Outstanding charges. All we want to do is have the opportunity to workshop to get them here. We want to move it forward tonight to say we're, we're making progress. However, we all got to get on the same page and find out if it's fair and equitable for all parties. That's all you're saying. And I, I get that. I get that. I got the list. I'm looking at the list. It's, it's some things, it's not, that, that need to be cleared up. You, them, you know, vacant properties versus properties with structures, you know, there, there, it's, it's a lot of detail. But we can't do it here tonight. It's not gonna happen tonight. But if, if we want to say we had it table, we come to the next meeting, and then we're gonna move the business forward. Can we hear what you're saying? We, we're interested in doing a deal that's right for us. Here's what we need. We can't do that right now. So we gotta go to a session where we can, Wayne County's gotta be there. Uh, State Land Bank's gotta be there, pull out our list. I like this. I don't like this. We're not selling property. You take these trucks, all of that. We can't do that here. So I'm just saying, I've seen the list, and for Councilmember Shafi, Martin, I've seen properties, I, I got them highlighted. I've seen, yes, those, the mayor spoke, those were demo, and there was stuff on the old list. But we gotta, we gotta get to the table with all the details, so we can make an informed decision that's fair and equitable. That's all I'm saying. All right, so I would, I, I, I would say we can cautiously move forward, provided we have our special meeting and we do our thing in the special meeting and say, and if it don't work out, it was conditional, we don't have a deal.
It's provisional.
Okay.
Point of order.
Yes, ma'am.
I like to move that we vote.
Okay, hold on a second. Um, before we vote, uh.
Hold on a second. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Ms. Manica had the floor.
Okay.
Yeah, and then Ms. Robinson, so let's, let's, let's stay organized. Ms. Manica, you were saying?
I move that we vote on the resolution of memorandum for understanding between the City of Highland Park and, hold on, I'm sorry. So, with no disrespect, here, President.
Yes, ma'am.
In the middle of a proposal or a motion, you cannot leave the floor.
Ma'am, I'm only responsible for the, for the feet that I'm wearing.
Are we gonna vote while he, or we gonna vote while he goes?
So, so we are, we are a body of five. Um, I'm sitting in my chair. You three ladies are sitting in your chair. That might be a conversation you have to have with the gentleman, because I'm at work. This is a business meeting.
Okay.
So let's.
Move to vote on the resolution for memorandum of understanding between the City of Highland Park and Wayne County Land Bank Corporation, adding number seven, pending.
Provisions.
Of provisions, no, pending in writing the provisions and assurances from Wayne County Land Bank, including, I used the word concurrent before, but I don't want to use that. Complying to Charter nine point fifteen. That's everything you read.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Protem, so we have a motion on the floor. Madam Protem, were you gonna offer support or?
No, that's not why I had my hand raised.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have support? Chair offer support. Madam Protem, you have questions?
The resolution that's came before us is like putting a cart before the horse. We should have had all those meetings and everything, Mr. Garrett, before this evening came in front of us, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, I can't.
I know you can't.
I, I just want to see us.
And I, so do I.
I, I want to see us move forward.
Yes, I do.
I feel the passion. I know we just want to do it right.
Yes.
But you're right. So, but I, what I, what I would hope is that the message that we receive, that we send
Yes.
is that we, we're willing to move forward, and so I, I'll, I take what you say in future is, is bringing anything.
Our department. Yes, sir.
We would have the information ahead of time to have that fruitful discussion so that we could take action and people be comfortable with.
Yes, sir.
That's a, that's the perfect scenario.
Yes.
We're in one that's not perfect.
That's not our fault.
I understand. I, I just, I'm just saying, I, I want to see us take advantage of the opportunities that we have.
And we want to see the same thing.
That's it, so.
Okay, so we.
Can I read the motion again?
Yeah, hold on just one second. Um, just for the people in the audience, if members need to relieve themselves, they don't, they don't ask permission. I've said that in the past. So if a member needed to go to relieve themselves, that is the exception in our meeting of someone leaving the podium. I don't think Mr. Al Shafi was being disrespectful. He had to go to the men's room.
He did.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, I just want to make sure, make it clear. So sometimes, you know, again, we sit in these chairs in front of you guys, we're still human, drinking water, coffee, whatever. So that was, just so the people in the audience know, if a member has to relieve themselves, I've already discussed with them that they don't, we don't have to make a motion, anything like that. They could just go and relieve themselves like regular folks. So people in the audience, don't think that Mr. Shafi was just disrespecting the vote. He just had to go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
It's simple. And so, so now we have a motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. We have a motion on the floor.
So I'm gonna read the motion.
Yes, ma'am, if you would.
And, and again, Mr. Shafi did come in, he did tell me. Thank you. The motion is, I move, I move to vote on a conditional approval of the resolution for memorandum of understanding between the City of Highland Park and the Wayne County Land Bank Corporation, adding the addition of number seven, pending in writing the provisions and assurance from Wayne County Land Bank that it will comply with our Charter nine point fifteen.
The motion was seconded by the chair, and we will have a workshop on this at our next, prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting. So now that we have the motion on the floor, it's been fully defined. Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call the row?
Councilwoman Shafi.
This is just under conditions, correct?
Correct.
All right. I give you a yes vote for that. But I will be watching. Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Protem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. So far, we have two items for the next workshop. This will be one of them. Moving on to the next item.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Um, item six, under police, a resolution to approve the purchase of one animal control vehicle from La Fontaine Dodge to be funded by the police vehicle budget.
Chief of Police, come on down. You're the next contestant.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
All right, you guys.
All right. Yeah, so, uh, obviously, we're, we're before you today, um, to purchase a animal control vehicle. I know it sounds like we're coming to you for a lot of vehicles lately, but I.
Get out of my head.
I promise you, there.
Get out of my head.
There's a method to our madness. Um, and it really is all about replacing an extremely old, uh, aging fleet. And we're trying to get to a point where we can eliminate some repair costs and, um, have vehicles that are under warranty, um, that, you know, cut down on unnecessary expenditures and have safe vehicles on the road as well. Um, we did have a plan in place for an animal control vehicle. Um, we had ordered a insert for our animal control vehicle, which would have been for um, a Dodge Ram that we were gonna relocate to animal control. Unfortunately, that Ram was involved in a collision and it was, uh, ultimately totaled. Therefore, um, we weren't able to make that transition. So now we currently have a sleeve to put inside the bed of the animal control or the Dodge Ram that we no longer have. Um, so it puts us, puts us in a situation where in order to use that, we would have to replace the vehicle it was intended for. Um, so we shopped around and we were able to find, um, a used vehicle that has a significant warranty included in the price. Um, uh, powertrain warranty and an extended, um, factory warranty, which would give us, uh, seven years, 100,000 mile warranty, um, for the price of, um, $39,500, which is, um, which is, um, to replace the vehicle that was ultimately totaled in the collision. So, that being said, some may say, is animal control really that critical?
Yes.
And to answer that question, um, I'd like to share some stats with everyone. Um, to date, we've, we've, uh, taken in, and, and mind you, it's almost, almost seven months into the year. We've taken in over, um, 50 animals. We've written over 160, um, violations for, for loose animals, so animals at large, could be vicious animals, um, which is a significant number. Now, the benefit of recovering these animals and taking them to the Humane Society i- is really has several, several benefits. One, we get treatment for the animal if they're in need of, um, veterinary services. So if an animal's injured, they're gonna treat them. They're going to, um, provide these services to them. And ultimately, when someone comes to recover their animal, they're, they're responsible for the fees, not the City of Highland Park. The other benefit is whatever fees the animal control chart or Humane Society charges for the animals, when someone comes and recovers that animal, they deduct that from our monthly Humane Society contract. So sometimes you may see during the monthly stats, our, our typical contract price right now is, I think, around $700. Sometimes you'll see $200 for the month. Sometimes you'll see 500, this and that. So when people come and recover these animals, it reduces our, our bill. So, you know, it, it's beneficial for us to, to take these loose animals off the street, um, you know, for several safety reasons. And we, we actually recover money on, on the backend through Humane Society in a deduction, uh, to our contract. So, so animal control is, is, is most definitely needed, and I do believe that it, it's a source of revenue, um, in terms of taking the animals off the street for people to recover. Um, obviously, our goal's not to make money off that program. It's a safety thing, but there are benefits of getting the animals off the street. And I don't know if you guys noticed, but And I don't know if you guys noticed, but me personally, I've noticed a significant number dropping uh animals on the street, loose animals on the street. Sometimes we recover two or three a day. A lot of times, you know, we will work with the homeowner and we'll give the animal back. So even though these numbers are kind of high in terms of what we turn into Humane Society, sometimes we go to, you know, to a resident and the resident's like, listen, man, I apologize, the, you know, the dog broke its chain or or the fence fell apart or something that could happen to any one of us. We try and work with them. You know, we'll give them an opportunity. Maybe they don't have their their dog tags or whatever. We'll say, hey, make sure you get the animal license. We'll give you thirty days or we'll give you a certain amount of time. So our job's not to take any anyone's animals away. Our job is not, you know, to sanction people unnecessarily. We take all that into consideration. We try and work with uh work with the residents. So that's that's my uh my spiel.
Okay, thank you for that. But just one second. So remember, what I wanted to do is make sure that all of us could be brought up to speed on what the item is. I'm going to do that for the next two items as well. From finance, also from outside communication. At this point, it's key that we make we take some sort of action. And then if we have questions, it's appropriate for members to go ahead and dialogue on those. So Madam Pro Tem, are you, is your hand up to make a motion?
My hand is up to make, ask a question.
So so we we had the speaker, same thing we did for the table item. We had someone speak on it. And then now, in order to take action on it, even for us to dig in and start dialoguing in a public forum, we have to have some sort of action take place, either a motion to.
Moved.
A move to approve with questions. Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Al Shafi for item five. That is a resolution to approve the purchase of one animal control vehicle from La Fontaine Dodge to be funded by the police vehicle budget. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Manica. Madam Pro Tem, you said you had questions.
Yes. I can ask my question now?
Please, go right here.
You said this is coming from a grant or a police vehicle?
No, so this is, uh, obviously, we're approaching the end of the fiscal year. This is uh money, additional monies that were allocated for vehicle purchases that we allocated the last fiscal year. So this is left leftover money that will cover the expense of the vehicle. So it's from the police budget. This is not specifically from a grant.
Okay, because it said police vehicle budget. You got a budget specifically for police vehicles?
For our, so it's under the capital underlay where the capital expenses where we we allocate the money was specific for those vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have additional questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Um, first question, you answered my first question. My second question is, does the vehicle stay on premises after after hours or?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Okay.
So what happens is um when Officer Beard is not available, the vehicle remains on site. Sometimes officers are forced to jump in that vehicle and recover animals if it's within hours that he's not available.
Correct.
So.
And then.
My next question is, um, this is the picture, right? The Dodge Ram right here?
No.
No.
Uh, it's very similar to that. That was a quote from another agency, but it's basically the same vehicle.
So where would the animals sit?
So uh, the picture doesn't doesn't do it justice because, as I stated before, we bought an insert that goes in into the bed.
I see, Mr. Shafi.
So so that that is where the animals go. It's it's an insert that slides into the bed. It gets wired to the vehicle for air conditioning, fans, lighting and things like that.
Like a camper?
Kinda.
Okay.
Yeah, camper for a dog.
So Mr. Beard is not holding him in his lap or anything like that?
No, no. Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Al Shafi, you had a question?
Okay, yeah, um. Uh, real quick, uh, uh, first, Council President, I I'm going to, I'm going to pick at you for a second here because I moved with questions. I should have been the first to answer. Charmaine stole one of my questions. Um, wh- wh- what are the work hours for for Mr. Beers?
Well, I'll let Mr. Beard explain his his work schedule to you.
Yeah, please explain that with me, please.
Yeah, currently, we are Monday through Friday, ten AM to six PM.
Okay, okay. Ten AM to six PM. Cause you know, I, y- y- you know where I'm going already, right? Cause I've seen you out a lot later than that. Yeah, okay, all right, okay. So that's your hours. Okay, all right. This is under warranty, right? So we're going to be covered for quite some time with this, right, Chief?
Yeah, so if you, um, I don't know if you if you have the attached quote, but there's an extended warranty for seven years, hundred thousand miles. Uh, it was additional eight hundred ninety-five dollars, which is included in the price.
That's not bad. It's not bad, Chief. Okay. And this is one to work for the for the um the insert that you do have.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'm good.
And and to answer your question, I I know you said you saw the animal control officer out past hours. So in the event he recovers an animal, all right, we take him to the Humane Society, which is in Westland. Uh, that's whom we have a contract with. And so obviously, there's turnaround time. So sometimes if it's an evening run or if we, you know.
Oh, no, 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 Chief, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm I'm talking about, he made a call after hours.
Okay, okay.
Next door to me. You know what I'm talking about.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any more questions? I'm sorry, Madam Pro Tem?
You know, the city has a lot of coyotes. Do y'all?
A lot.
So we're aware of the coyotes. Um, we've been in communication with the DNR in the past. Unfortunately, um, it seems to be their stand at this moment that the, so there's a den over by the, you know, where our Hamilton location is. And it seems to be their position at this moment to leave them be. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay, and so if we leave them be, because they told us to leave them be, if somebody get attacked by them, we can sue the V. Who did you say?
So we were in communication with the Department of Natural Resources.
So that's who the lawsuit should go to if somebody, a citizen should get attacked by one.
Well.
Not the city.
I I mean, I'm certainly not going to make that statement. What I'm going to say is, this is a, this is a, this is an animal in its natural habitat at this moment. Therefore, you know, that's that's the position we're in. However, we we do monitor them. We we've dealt with them over over there. And thus far, they've been staying to themselves. Um, if they were to venture out beyond that area, we would be forced to to do something about it.
Thank you.
Well, Chief, Chief, just for the record, I, you know where I live, right?
I do.
I see them every day. There's a white one that crawls through our garbage every morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Every morning.
So again.
It's about that tall.
If it gets to a point where they're, like I said, they're venturing from that field area that they have, then we need people to ca- contact us. And at that point, we we have no choice but to do something about it. Now, some of them, you know, some could just be a pack of wild dogs. Unfortunately, we we've seen that too. So again, they may not be coyotes, but they they might, um, you know, it's something we'd have to investigate. So again, I encourage the citizens to contact us if they if they see them and, uh, you know. That's what we're out here to do.
Now, Chief, I got one more question for you, okay? Uh, well, animal. Driving that vehicle.
No, as I stated, after hours, um, if he's not available, then unfortunately, you know, none of us really desire to do it just because we're not you know, skilled in that as much. But we're, for safety of the citizens, we have to go out there and recover animals.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I I asked that question based on on wear and tear. I look at uh at Mr. Beers, his 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 clothes and his equipment are spotless. So I'm assuming the truck is going to stay that way as well.
Well, let's let's hope so. However, we do have supervisors that inspect our vehicles uh before and after shift. So I I expect to maintain the vehicle to to our standards.
All right. Do we have any additional questions here? Hearing none. Um, Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call for a vote on item six?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you so much. Next item under.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing, gentlemen, before you go, would you be kind enough to get us some images to put on your Facebook page identifying what a coyote is? If you could put some pictures up, because there are quite a few people who might not be able to distinguish a coyote from the typical Detroit Hines fifty-seven, which is part pig, part wilder, part lab, part child. They, you know, we have dogs that that look like they could be related to the coyote. So if you would be kind enough just to put up a couple of pictures for our citizens to be able to reference so that they know not to come in contact with that animal, they can avoid.
Yeah, yeah, I can get with our PR person.
Okay, thank you so much.
Have her post that on.
Yeah, just a couple of photographs.
The biggest significant part of them are their ears. They're very pointy. They stand up very straight. So that kind of sets them aside.
And their eyes.
Yeah.
A typical shepherd mix or something like that, so.
My 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 concern, and I'll and I'll let it fall there, is that now that all the kids are out of school, there are a lot of friendly dogs in Highland Park. As you know, you picked up quite a few of them. And I just want to make sure that at least the adults who haven't even thought about who happened and probably use social media, whatever, can see a picture of the coyote. And it may trigger something for them or at least start a conversation with the people in the neighborhood over in District Three so that they can identify what, even a couple of posters on the board so that they would know what it is. Because many people don't. They can't distinguish a coyote from just a regular stray dog. So I think that might be extremely helpful in avoiding contact with humans and those that den the coyotes.
Sure.
I thank you so much for that.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item seven under finance. Wait for the ambulance to go by. So under item seven, seven A, we have the submission of the monthly financial statement for May twenty twenty-three. Ms. Eleanor, you have that? You want anything you want to add for that? Or we just doing a receiving file here? Okay. Members? Under item seven, finance, submission of the monthly financial statement. We all have it. Is that the pledge of counsel how we dispose of this item?
I want to approve with questions.
So we have a motion on the floor um from Councilwoman Martin to approve the receiving file for the monthly financial statement from May twenty twenty-three. We have a second from Mr. Al Shafi. Ms. Martin, do we have, I mean, could you share with us what your questions are?
Yes. My my first question is, what's what's the process for that five thousand with the CDAC? What's the process for that? Could you tell me?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So you have to submit your receipts or your invoices in order for you to um get reimbursement for that. And it needs to be done for June thirtieth if you want it to go to use this five thousand for this budget.
Okay, so that's only for reimbursement, correct?
Well, technically, you should have an invoice or if you have receipts, then you need to have them turned in to Finance Department or to get the get reimbursed.
Okay, and then what about after the filing date?
After what?
After after the filing date?
After June thirtieth?
Yes.
Then that money is just, is you will be working on next year's budget. That is, the money is not held over. It's just for this year.
What's the, is the process still the same?
Yes.
Okay, so it's only a reimbursement. It's not like you get quotes or anything like that?
It depends on what you, what 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 you are trying to do. I mean, it's, I don't know what you want to do. So you just have to let me know what you want to do. And and if it's feasible, it'll be, you can do it. Like, uh, Smiko got dumpster. She turned in the invoice for the for the person. And they got paid and that was done.
Okay, so just an invoice. Okay.
It's better if it's a invoice from a company, yes.
Okay.
Madam Pro Tem, you have a question?
So when you say rent first, does the districts have to pay for the stuff first and then get reimbursed?
And now it's recommended that you go to, depending on what your project is, if you if if you want to get something, you should have a company that will submit an invoice to us for that they could be paid for whatever your project is, whether it's the bad, you know, equipment or whatever you decide to do.
Garbage cans for four thousand four hundred forty-four dollars. Thank you, ma'am, for clarity.
That's an expensive garbage.
Yeah.
The little garbage cans are, they are actually very expensive.
We've been pricing them. They are very expensive.
Mr. Shafi?
Yes.
Um. I see every month fifteen thousand dollars to the city of Amtrimming. Is that for uh the collection of our taxes?
Yes, that's for income taxes.
Okay. Every month, that's kind of high.
They have a contract.
I would love to see it. And um. Yeah, that's it. I'm fine.
Okay, Ms. Martin, you have additional questions? This is all, remember, we're just to stay on the on the topic. Under finance, seven A, the submission of the monthly financial statement. In this case, we're receiving and filing. Ms. Martin, you have a question?
Yeah, the summer, the youth summer program. I see the budget is, what is that, fourteen thousand? No, is it seven thousand? That's still available? Is that happening this year? Or this summer?
Yes, HR is in charge of that. It's, they just don't hold right now. They're doing, getting the paperwork and everything together. So they will be a summer youth program this year.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman. Mr. Shafi? Um, Carl Johnson, I'm looking at five thousand dollars here. Can you tell me what that was for?
He he's uh, he's a contractor with city.
What does he do? I'm not trying to be smart. I just asked what it's for.
All right.
Oh, okay, 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 Carl, okay. Okay, Carl, I didn't know that your last name was Johnson there, buddy. Yeah, that's a pretty black name there, buddy. All right, all right, I'm good.
So can we go ahead and call to roll on and see uh the submission of the monthly financial statement? Go ahead, Madam Deputy Kirk, please.
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yeah.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, next item under finance, item seven B, the resolution to amend the operating budget as presented by the Finance Department and Mayor McDonald for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. There's a typo on this document. That's that. That's the existing, okay. And that's the one that we agreed to move funds away from.
No.
You will put next year's.
Okay. This is, we are amending the current budget that we're operating in. Mr. Johnson, I'm going to turn it over to you before we take action so we know what we're talking about.
Yes, let me clarify. Good evening. Come be me back here. So let me just start with the requirement. So the state of Michigan requires us to adopt a budget annually for our general fund, our special revenue funds. And they highly recommend budgets for all the other funds as well. So that was the budget you just passed at our last meeting. The budget you passed the last meeting was for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, beginning July one, ten days from now. The other requirement of the Budget Act is after it's passed. So what we're talking about is the budget that was passed pre, you know, that it was enacted July one of twenty-two to June of twenty-three, which is where we are right now. That budget expires in ten days. The Budget Act says, to the extent facts and circumstances change during the year, you're required to amend it to reflect those facts and circumstances. And in fact, if you don't amend it on the expenditure side, your auditors are required to write you up. So if you, if if in the actual audit report, you spend one dollar more than what was appropriated, it's a violation of the Budget Act and and its reporting to the state of Michigan. So what we usually do is I try to do quarterly. This year's kind of unique because we had a complete changeover in council and mayor. And so that was midway through the year. So one didn't get passed beforehand and then we're now just getting here right now. So what you have before you is the final amendment. So this is my best guesstimate as to where I think we are going to end up. And so the the purpose of this amendment, again, this is the budget that's going to expire in ten days. Okay, so the purpose of this is to just get our budget in line with what our actual results are going to be. So let me back up a little bit. It's a very large, very substantial budget amendment as far as dollar wise goes. So the budget itself increases our revenues by two point four million dollars. And it also increases our expenditures by two point four million dollars. So the good news being, we have a balanced budget right now. Again, this is one of the first times in years we've actually had a balanced budget and are going to end decades. Yeah, so again, the city is, the city is doing well. So I, you know. So I, you know, again, we've turned around, are we flush? No, but again, just to balance it annually, that's the start. You know, spend what you're bringing in and don't incur a deficit. So this budget, the original budget that was passed, a lot of things happened after it was passed. So let me just run through some of those. Our actual audit results came in, in October or whatever, and the results of our income tax collections, we were almost two million higher than what we thought we were at June of twenty-two. We ended up two million higher than what the original budget was. And so that was never incorporated into the original budget. If you recall, the mayor gave substantial increases to salaries of our public safety department, uh both police and fire. So they were substantially increased, contracts were settled, et cetera. Substantial increase in their pay during, since, after the budget was passed. In June, uh you weren't here, but the ambulance contract, which was free, all of a sudden they came to us and said, oh, by the way, it's now three hundred and sixty thousand dollars next year. Otherwise, you don't have ambulance service on budget. So that was passed, but again, a budget wasn't created for that. Uh, we had numerous lawsuit judgments against us to the tune of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars last year. One of which was ordered on the tax rolls for about a hundred and fifty, but again, we didn't have any choice. We don't budget to lose lawsuits, but it happened. And again, the, the Budget Act says you are required to amend your budget for that. So some of the significant things, again, on the revenue side, two million dollar increase in revenues for income tax. Uh, hundred and twenty-five thousand, let me see, a hundred and forty-five thousand for that lawsuit judgment that I was talking about. Because again, once it's ordered on the tax rolls, it's a revenue that our citizens unfortunately have to pay, and we turn around and just forward that to pay off the, the lawsuits. Um, our building and building department fees and fines and fees collected, uh almost a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars higher than what we had budgeted. So again, another sign that things are turning around for us. We have new development, new planning and inspection fees, et cetera. Our court revenue is a little down, that's a, a component of uh not having enough officers to write tickets. You know, so it's down about two hundred and forty thousand. And then we also have carry forward items. So the flood that we had at the, the record, the recreation center to the tune of, I think our costs were somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we got insurance proceeds back for those, but at the end of last year, we never finished the project. So in this budget here, it's adding a revenue for a hundred and fifty, the balance of those proceeds, the insurance proceeds, as well as the related expense to it. So we, we just finished up the project in the current year. But again, it was budgeted last year and we had to create a new budget to show that the, we were going to spend the balance of, of, of the rest of it here. On the expense side, again, I touched on it, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for legal settlements. Um, three hundred, let's see.
Ninety-two.
Three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars for the ambulance contract. Again, you know, that was kind of out of the blue. Um, and then we also talked about at the audit presentation, the FIA building, where now the general fund has to subsidize the FIA building. So again, the original budget that was passed, um, there's money left available, but you see the very last item on page two, it says a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's the amount the general fund's going to have to kick in for the year that's ending in ten days, uh related to this. So what you have before you is really just record keeping. This keeps us favorable with the state of Michigan. It adjusts our books so that when our audit report comes out and ultimately goes to the state, they look at it and say, yes, we spend according to our plan, even though, again, significant adjustments. What they look for is just the fact that we, it was presented to you, you're made aware of it, and then we adjust it. And so what we fully intend to do and what your expectation should be is on a quarterly basis, Carl's up here talking to you just like this each and every quarter.
Okay.
And amending it each and every quarter. Because that way, we can be more proactive and to the extent things are favorable or less favorable, we can react accordingly. So if our income tax revenue is through the roof or whatever, and we have a couple hundred extra thousand, I'm sure you want to be made aware of that. And you know, it's our opportunity and I'm sure that's where we can buy more dog trucks and more fire trucks and more, whatever the police department wants there. So, so again, I hope that at least gives you a little background. So what we're really looking for is just to pass this, and again, this affects the general fund. There's only, only a couple of funds, we did a good job in most of it. The general fund, uh the JAG fund, um, the JAG fund, there was a timing difference in when we actually got our reimbursement. So we're, the amendment says increase our revenues by thirty-five thousand. And the last one in the grants fund, uh we got a, a Brian grant for police vehicles to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was, we did not have that when I put the budget together originally. So this is increasing the revenue and the corresponding expense related to that on page two. So that is it, it's just the general fund and those two other funds. And talk fast and we'd welcome any questions.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion, so we can get this, so we can start discussing it officially. So the item on the floor is under the finance department. B, resolution to amend the operating budget as presented by the finance department and the mayor, the mayor McDonald for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. Chair entertain a motion.
Approve with questions.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi to approve with questions. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Manic, Mr. Ashafi. Okay, uh Carl, you. I'm sure you can answer this for me. So again. Madam Proton, I got you next. I'm seeing, you know, under salary, one oh one, three, three, nine, seven, zero, two, dot, zero, zero, zero.
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at thirty thousand dollars. What is that to?
So that.
Because I keep seeing this thirty thousand dollars, I keep seeing it and me.
Okay, so just, just quit sitting there. This, this thirty thousand. So remember the, this is public safety.
Okay.
This is those raises that we talked about.
Okay.
That were given out uh by the previous mayor to adjust the salaries for public safety.
Okay, and that would cover right underneath the, the, um, the, uh, the salary bonuses at eleven thousand.
Yeah, so part of the settling the contract, there was a one-time bonus paid out, I don't remember, it was a five hundred or a thousand per member, and that's what that represents.
Okay, okay, so you explained the ambulance already, that's basically, that's four hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
I see here.
Remember, our balance budget includes that four hundred thousand dollar bombshell. So again, it's, it's a good year for us, it's really good year for us.
Okay, and then there's one here for forty thousand dollars on the salary. Is that for the part timers?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right. All right, Carl, I'm good. Madam Proton, thank you so much.
Hi, yes, I see that we purchased the jaws of life for forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. That's great, so, and then we also have big sixteen thousand five hundred turnout gear worship, what's that?
So the turnout gear is the gear that the firemen wear? That you can't just throw into a normal washer, so they have this big old washer that actually cleans those. Those are a little unique. What happened was those were approved by the previous council before June thirtieth, but they actually weren't physically purchased until July, July or August or after June third. So when that happens, the budget was last year, the budget expired, and in essence, it just has to be rebudgeted in the current fiscal year, so.
Okay, and then I have, it said compensated absences, fifteen thousand dollars, former CDPW, what's that?
So when people leave, so that's the, the community development or the, uh, as I see, which, when, when people leave employment.
Okay.
When we pay them out their sick vacation, whatever leave time they're entitled to, that's what we refer to as compensated absences, yeah. So if, if you were a long-term employee here, like I, I believe our DPW director, when he left, again, long-term employee, could have had a hundred hours, two hundred, three hours, a hundred hours, I don't remember off the top of my head. But that's, when they leave, we pay them out. And at that time, that's when it actually hits the expense. So again, hard to budget because we don't know when people will leave and, you know, or retire or quit or, you know, any of those things. But that's specifically what that relates to.
Okay, and I have uh one more, and it says floor insurance, flood expenses.
Yeah, so that is the balance of the flood repairs that we did that started last year and we didn't finish them until this fiscal year. So we actually finished them July, August, September, you know, right after the end of last year. So they've been, they've been done a while, but the, I think the total was about eight hundred thousand we got in insurance and costs. It was kind of a net zero, but not all of it was spent before June thirtieth of last year. So some of it rolled into this year, and there's a revenue and an expense that offset.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Carl.
Mr. Shafi. Uh, Carl, I got, I got one more question for you, and I know you're going to give me an understanding. As the stage right now, as. This current council or current administration, anybody that's currently working for the city, have they received a raise?
Uh, again, the mayor gave substantial raises before he left.
Yeah.
I don't.
I'm talking about for this.
Yeah, I'm unaware of any raises.
Okay.
From our new mayor.
All right.
Going forward.
All right, thank you, Carl.
All right, so let's, uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the vote on item B?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you, motion carries.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Carl.
Moving on to the next item, this is a outside communication, a letter from Parker Pride Alumni Association uh regarding the twenty twenty-three Christmas light show. This came to us on June thirteenth from Mr. Sidney Spike. Hope this email finds you well. I'm emailing you to inquire about if the city of Highland Park would like to participate in the annual PPAA Christmas Light Show. Uh, we would like your collaboration and support as this event has been a staple in our community for the last four years. If time permits, I would like to discuss this matter in more detail at the upcoming city council meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration. This is a receiving file, Mr. Spike. If you would just give us a little bit of context and then, members, if you have any opinion on receiving and filing, if you have questions, we can deal with that. But Mr. Spike, you would be so kind.
Oh, yeah, um, hello, counselor.
Hello, good evening.
Citizens, uh, the light show will be in December. Last year, our budget was like, uh, maybe eight to nine thousand to pull that on. That light show we put on is not smoke and guns, that's a serious company that does that. Uh, they do it downtown Detroit, they do it all over there, Michigan, and they're doing things for us because they want to see Highland Park do some better things. Uh, they lowered their prices for us so we can put this show on, but at eight thousand dollars is still a lot for the show that we put on. Um, it don't look like an eight thousand dollar show, but the stuff that they do and the equipment that they bring is serious and it costs. Um, CW Morris is on board to try to help us get things in order. A few of our sponsors is on board to get things in order, because our city needs things to do. You know, we want to be like other cities, have Christmas events, summer events. You know, um, and that's what Parker Pride is trying to bring back to the city, how, city of Highland Park. Last year, I don't know what happened, the show went on, but the city's portion didn't go on. They didn't get a tree, which was really embarrassing for the media exposure or the citizens asking what happened to the tree? Why we don't have our ceremony that we have every year to put on with this new light show? Before the light show, there was a tree. Um, we asked the previous mayor, you know, you getting a tree? Yeah, we got to talk to Willie, and Willie had to talk to this person.
Okay.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on.
It, 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 it went all over the place. We still went with what we needed to do to get this light show together. Um, is the city prepared to do their portion to add to our light show, which will make it more festive for our citizens and the kids? Because theoretically, the adults, we had our time with, you know, Christmas and the celebration, who celebrates that? But the kids in our city has very little things to look forward to doing and being involved in. This year, we want the kids to be more involved, we, we want to have activity. Hey, we want to do something in the lot and maybe have them bobbing for apples or something that the kids can do leading up to that night light show.
Okay, so let me ask you this, members of council, right now, this is a receiving file. Do we have any action that the council would like to take so we can open some discussion on this? This is just a receiving file, well, if we can get a motion on the floor to receive and file, we can get some questions and discussion.
Move to receive and file.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi to receive and file, second from Council Proton, Proton, you have your hand up.
Yeah, questions and statements.
Yes, ma'am.
The year that we had that beautiful tree outside, we had a tree cutting service by the name of Chop that volunteered to go get the tree, cut it down and put it up for us at no charge. So I don't know what we're going to do to get a tree out there this year, but that's what happened with that.
Now, it's funny that you said, I've been looking into some.
Oh, I'm gonna, and then, so you're here to ask for money?
No.
Oh.
I'm not here to ask for money. I'm here to ask for participation and support. Ms. Martin brought up something very, very important at the last discussion about the parade. She wanted it bigger, she wanted things to happen, she wanted all this grandiose, which is great. If you help us, we can only do what we can do as a group. If we have more help, especially in your, in, in, in your, in your field, being a council, what can you do to help a entity like ours for free to get this thing going bigger? So maybe we can sit back and just let it work itself out.
Yes, sir, Mr. Spike, too, be, uh, as we had questions asked today about council members' ability to tap into their district funds, I would encourage you to try to have individual conversations with members leading up to that. We're going into a new budget year, and if you have vendors that are willing to support your efforts and they can produce invoices, where members of council, if they wanted to lend their support from their individual districts, we have that. Those funds are in the district council seats. So if you could work with these individuals and see if they wanted to support your activities, that is one way that we could potentially offer support. We can't guarantee anything from the city, we're not in a position to allocate funds. But there are some individual means that are available to the, the district council persons, as well as going out and advocating on behalf of the event to see if we could get sponsorship. That is the other part that council certainly has the latitude to do. So, um, we can't speak on behalf of the administration because we don't control the purse strings. But if you're looking for. Yes, ma'am, but if you're looking for.
Council President, we have already started the conversation about the uh, uh, Christmas display that will be in front of the city hall. I spoke briefly uh just yesterday with our chief of police, and we are starting the process of looking for a tree for the outside. Uh, these are things that we are working on already. I will speak with Mr. Spike. We will start meetings about the uh, this activity and the city's portion um of what, what, what he, what we would like to see happen as far as a tree lighting ceremony and the things that will go on uh in con, in, in, in conjunction with the uh light show. Um, Councilwoman, um, Manica in her district, uh, and any other council person that would like to sit in, only two can sit in on these meetings. But um, I don't have a problem with working with Mr. Spike on getting this done. Uh, it has been a tradition and uh the tree lighting, I, again, I just spoke with our chief of police who can confirm that about starting to look for a tree. I think we're at the point now where we really do not want to continue to keep paying uh for trees that uh we end up having to throw away. So we're looking to see what we can do to, like other cities that purchase uh trees, very nice trees that's artificial that continue, they continue use uh and the purpose of those trees.
Thank you so much, ma'am. So at this point, we've had some discussion on it, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi, supported by Council Proton Robinson to receive and file the document. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please take the role on that item, item eight?
Councilman Ash. Councilman Ash.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, your document has been received and filed, and we will stay tuned.
You guys have my number.
Yes, sir.
Please call.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, ladies and gentlemen, we reached the end of our business for the day. The only section that we have left here is citizens' participation. For citizens' participation, we are, we allocate two minutes for citizens to come to the podium and address council on any item. I'm going to try and adhere to that two-minute mark, give or take a.
Council President Thomas.
Yes.
Uh, Chief, uh, Chief McMahon.
He wants to speak.
Some process server trying to serve me, fuck out of here.
So, ma'am, uh, welcome. If you wanted to come to the counter, to the podium and speak, would you please, would you mind stating your name and where you're in? What city is your, is your home?
Highland Park, my name is Valerie Owens.
How you doing, Ms. Owens? Good evening.
I'm going to do better, I hope, after I leave here tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have gotten two tickets for um the lot that's next to my house, which is sixty-six, the, the lot number is sixty-six Elmhurst Street. I've been trying to get that lot since twenty nineteen. I came up in twenty nineteen and inquired about it. I was told that I had to bring proof of my taxes being paid, proof of the water bill, write a letter to the council. I did everything I was told to do. Okay, every time I came, they not doing nothing right now, they not doing nothing right now, it is. Every time I came, they not doing nothing right now. They not doing nothing right now. It is adjoining a lot to my property, which is seventy Elmhurst Street. Okay.
Can I interrupt? You don't own it, but you got a ticket for it.
I don't own it. Okay, but I paid the fee for it and I've been mowing it for the last ten years. They told the house down. My neighbor and I mowed ten lots on our block. I was told this year after I got the ticket, I said, well, nobody has cut that, 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 that lot since they tore their house down but me, but me. I was told that I shouldn't have been cutting it. I don't like living in a forest.
Right, right.
Okay, so we cut them. Sunday I sit on my porch, my riding mower is down right now. So I won't have the funds until the first of the month, I mean, the third of the month to get it fixed. My neighbor right here can attest to the witness that our neighbor next door to me cut seven lots Sunday with his mower because we don't like living in the jungle. Okay, my car has gotten hit twice. On my personal car, the mirror got knocked off being on the street. On my, we, we have a truck that is a lease. I brought the paperwork up here and show Mr. Malone what, what it's costing from to get the mirror put back on. That's a lease. It's gotta be fixed. Okay, but I got a dent in my door right now from being parked on the street. My, 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 um, my deductible is one thousand dollars. The door to be fixed is twelve hundred. So I'm not reporting it to the insurance company. That's gotta come out of my pocket. You know, I need that vacant lot next door. I was in a bad car accident. I was having trouble walking. I'm still taking physical therapy, but I am able to walk now, thank God. But I need that lot and I don't want to keep getting tickets. Okay, I talked to Mr. Hinton and he talked to Mr. Malone and asked him to, because they have the paperwork that I am trying to get it. And I've been told that at the last three, I was told from downstairs, it would be turned over to the council the next meeting, the next meeting. Well, the next meeting never happens. So I'm here tonight to hope that I can get this lot. I have my, my paperwork where I paid the fees that she told me to pay. And, and when I asked them about theirs, they couldn't find. I said, well, I got mine. I went home and got it. And that's twenty nineteen.
Okay, so council members, if you guys could please make a note of sixty-six Elmhurst in your logs so that when this does come up for discussion, we have already had this conversation front loaded. We don't make the decision on what comes to us from community and economic development. That process happens on the executive side of government. But it sounds as if you've done all the things that you needed to do.
Everything I was told to do.
And so. And so what, what I do know from my own personal experience is that if you go into judge officer's courtroom and you have an order, a ticket for, for something like that, your explanation is key to how that conversation goes. We have a city attorney here that can verify that. The city is not looking to disenfranchise the residents, particularly those residents that are trying to maintain the property.
Okay, I came last month.
Yes, ma'am, but I don't.
And I was told that I had to pay the tickets because it wasn't my property. Okay, I'd went up there to pay it and they was having something up there on the ground over there on Hamilton, something with the other police agencies. So they were closed that day. My sister died in Alabama, so I went home for her funeral and I, I just got back last week. So I'm here tonight. I don't know, I don't know where to go, but I need to park on that lot.
Yes, ma'am. If you wouldn't mind, our city attorney says she would like to reach out to you. She'll probably provide you her business card and maybe she can provide you a little bit more clarity and some specifics on steps that you should take. I do thank you for coming. I understand that it is a big deal.
It is. Because I don't, I don't like keep getting my car here.
What I was gonna say is it's a big deal to deal with problems and keep it to yourself. It's a bigger deal when you come and share it with us because you're looking to try and get some resolution. I appreciate you showing up tonight. I feel I don't feel good about the fact that you are having to deal with this. From my own personal experience, I know what it's like to cut a forest down. So you do it because you want safety. And so I appreciate that. So we, as I said before, before you leave tonight, you would get a card from our city attorney and hopefully we'll be able to move forward. This is the city attorney here. So once we, we should be.
Council President, is Mr. Hinton still in the audience?
Ma'am, he is not. Yeah, so. Ms. Burton has said she would, she would address it forth. So thank you so much, ma'am, and I appreciate your time. Hopefully we can get some resolution. We've all written down the address and question. So if it comes back to us, it won't be the first time we've heard about it.
Thank you.
And we'll, our, our minds will be keyed into the set of circumstances until your neighbors thank you for taking care of their block.
And I, I will pay the two tickets that they said, but I, I would appreciate not getting it more.
Well, let's, let's talk to the attorney first. Let's, don't, don't spend money you don't have to, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Wait, spell your name for me. Spell your name for me.
Valerie Owens.
Valerie Owens. I love your, I love your name on your head. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your patience, ma'am. I appreciate it. Mr. McGee in the background.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Yeah, I just, since you was talking about lots, I was able to buy the lot that's directly adjacent to my home, but then there's another lot, a side lot they call it. And they told me at one time they couldn't sell a adjacent lot next to a side lot. You know, now I understand that you can buy an adjacent side lot. But when I went down there to the city, she looked up the property address and she said it still shows that it's a property on the vacant lot. And I've been in Highland Park for twenty, we go on twenty-three years in August. It has never been a structure there. So what do we need to do to get that cleared up so it doesn't show a structure on there anymore and I can purchase a vacant lot?
Can you give us the address?
It's fifty-six.
What street?
Oh, Bearford, I'm sorry.
Okay. Bearford?
Bearford.
You said it's fifty-six?
Fifty-six.
Is that the one that's on that?
That's the one that's on the.
I just said, I just went by there. Yeah.
Yeah, and that's county-owned, right? That's a county-owned property or is it owned by the city?
City-owned.
Okay. And so just, just for the citizens that are curious, the, the, this is the type of issue that I would entertain a workshop for because there's a whole lot of onion skin that needs to be peeled back. If we can understand that over the last decade, it's been almost no property transfers from the city of Highland Park, meaning we have been carrying that burden of ownership and also identification. And as Ms. Square had said before, sometimes properties have been demolished without the city, the structure of the city being made aware of it. That is one of those issues that many arms. So we're gonna have to dedicate, I'm willing to dedicate a workshop to something like that because the questions that you have, they provide insight that we wouldn't get unless citizens came forward and told us that.
Now, my second question now, since I live directly adjacent to these properties, have first right to buy? Okay, someone else just come in and say, I'm buying a lot on that block.
You know, I don't, that, that will be, that's, that's a question I don't know if any of us here can honestly answer. I'll tell you my bias. I don't have a problem telling you my bias. I would prefer to have an auction with just Highland Park residents. And then once we're finished doing it, somebody else, allow other people to join after a period of time where it's just Highland Park residents. But I don't think that's legal. That's just me telling you my bias. If anybody's gonna invest in the city, I'd like to see the people who live here first have an opportunity to invest.
Council President.
We can't say that.
I'm just telling you, I, I made an admission. When you say this is my bias, I'm saying this is my bias. It's not legal. I just said that. But I'm telling you what I would prefer. I would prefer to see citizens having an opportunity to buy property first.
Council President, according to the charter, if it's to the right of his property, he has first right of refusal.
Mr. McGee, Mr. Ashafi clarify that for us.
I'm giving him session two oh eight ten in the left.
Okay.
That's in the order.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's got first right of refusal.
Yeah.
He does.
And to, to members of the audience, let me just tell you something. Before I raised my right hand and became a mediator, we have to disclose our biases. It's not something I cannot do. So I'm in, I'm very comfortable saying I have a bias to something. I don't have any problem at all saying it. It's the problem is when you have a bias and you don't say you have a bias. I realize that that is not legal and it's not feasible, but because I've lived here for over twenty years, I'd like to see the people who live here benefit from the city's rebirth and revitalization. That's my personal bias. That's my story and I'm sticking to it. I don't know if he has another question. Mr. McGee, you over here two minutes. You got another question? Thank you very much. Yes, in the front row, ma'am, in the, in the yellow chair, please.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, residents of Highland Park. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Um, I have a few short questions. Before a lot of you were elected into office, the last mayor, there were some residents that came before the court and they were saying that the strip mall on this side of where, like where Glory is Market, that they were a couple of businesses that came in and they weren't paying taxes. I wanted to know, are they paying taxes as a, none? Okay, and also my next question is, well, first I want to make a statement. About a week or two ago, we had senior citizens came together on different streets in Highland Park to form a program to where they're cleaning the alleys for residents. And they had a couple of dumpsters and everything. I wanted to know, like, where is the money coming from for that? Because sometimes residents want to get together that don't have an organization going on and find out can they get dumpsters for blight that's already out there so that we can get it up.
Members?
Yeah, we have your name and your address.
Yeah.
Tammy Stafford.
What district do you live in?
One. Is that one?
No, you didn't tell me where you are.
What street?
No, I'm up under your district.
Okay, that's one.
Okay, yeah, one.
Yeah.
Two ten Faring Park.
Okay.
And another thing I wanted to address was there was a contracted company that they say they were contracted through the city to cut vacant lots that were. So I have a neighbor that is like kitty corner to where I stay at. He has supposedly like three or four lots by his home. So they were, the contracted company came out to cut one of the lawns. And this particular residence has cut everywhere. Okay. So he's quick to call the police, excuse my French, on black people.
Was it, was it, was it private property? Did the contractor come onto private property or is this public property?
Well, the contractor said that that particular lot was on their report in order for them to cut it. So he told them to get off of his property and he immediately started throwing boxes at them. Then he caused the police and the police come out. And I mean, he has an ex-wife who was a police officer, so he knows all the rules and regulations. So my thing is, what could we do in order to, because really when they came out to cut the lot, all the residents was looking like, you know, we weren't told that contractors were hired in order to do the lots.
I think, ma'am, the contractors that are out cutting property in the city are the contractors that are cutting city-owned lots. When a piece, a piece of private property, it belongs to the owner. The city only has discretion when it comes to operating within the framework of the law. If that private property owner is doing something illegal, that private property owner is doing something that's a violation to the city protocols, then you can act upon it. But that is, America has really strong private property laws. And so I don't think that we have the latitude to tell anybody what to do on a piece of property that is private. Now, identifying that, I have no idea how. Yes, ma'am. Unless you want to go, hold on just one second, ma'am. Unless you want to go look and verify the actual ownership by going to the Wayne County tax site, you can verify the ownership of any piece of property in Wayne County by going to the tax payment site. That's something you might do.
So with that contracted company with the resident telling them that they own the lot and get off his property, when the police came, if me and my mother wasn't out there, the people would have got arrested.
Well, again, that's, that's a DPW issue, ma'am. As far as determining ownership of a piece of property, that's not something the city council can do. Madam Mayor, you had a question?
No, I didn't have a question. I had a statement. I know the property that she's referring to, there has always been a nuisance there. He doesn't own all of those lots. And so the, we don't have a contracted services that's cutting lots from the city. There has not been a contract approved by the council to have lots cut. It was one on the table, but it never did go anywhere. So we don't have a, a only people cutting lots in this city for on city property should be the DPW department in which I have not, they have not reported to me that they were accosted by any citizen who told them to get off a lot. Now, there has been controversy about that person and I know exactly who you're talking about over the years and no one has done anything about it. I will make sure that our inspectors go out and our code enforcer to make sure first of all that he is not on property, that he's not using property that does not belong to him. And as far as handling whoever it was, if they called the police, I'm quite sure the police has a record of what happened. So we'll check with that too. And thank you for reporting that so that we can look into who it is that say they were contracted services from the city. Again, the city has not, the city council has not approved contracted services for cutting on any lots. And that would have had to happen and they did not approve it. So we do, we are using our own DPW department to do cutting. Thus why it's taken a little longer for those lots to get cut down because we only have so many. But thank you again. I appreciate that and I'll be looking at it. You're at two ten and we'll have, I'll have them come by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. You're well over your two-minute limit, but I wanted to make sure that, Mr., we have two people online too. So Mr. Spike, you, you can hold up for a second. We have Ms., Ms. Simpson, Mr. Lackey, if you could unmute Ms. Simpson so that she have an opportunity to speak. Yes, Ms. Simpson, good evening.
Hi, good evening, council and citizens. I had a similar question regarding the side lots. I had the opportunity to go over some of the previous council minutes and I noticed that I was approved to purchase a side lot back in two thousand and nineteen. And I just was wondering, what, is it too late to act on that approval? Or do I submit another approval?
You still have your documentation?
Which, the, the actual application or?
Yeah, if you, if you have your application and you have an approved resolution, I think you might want to come in and have a conversation with CED. You, you've actually done, you've checked some boxes already.
I initially did put it, put in an application back in, I put one in back in two thousand sixteen, two thousand and eighteen. And I just recently put another application in just past April. But I, like I said, I did do some research and I was able to find that it was approved back in March of twenty nineteen. And I'm just trying to see, because I was, I wasn't notified during that time. I'm just trying to see. I'm sorry.
That resolution is gonna be key. You actually have an approved resolution. That's an official document. If it was voted on and it was approved by the city council, you have part of what you need, I believe, with that approved resolution. We just have to track down your paperwork. And if I'm speaking out of turn, I'm sure somebody will jump forward to correct me. But if you have that documentation, I would encourage you coming into the municipal building and reaching out to Mr. Hinton or his assistant with that, with the, the document and seeing if you can track down your paperwork. If not, you have the most, one of the most important pieces of that process, which is an approved resolution from city council to sell you the property.
Okay.
That answer your question?
It does, it does. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas Jackson on the line. Can we unmute Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Sir, please, if you wouldn't mind stating your city of residence. Well, go ahead, go for it.
First, I want to do that lady that talked about her vehicle being damaged. Can she get in touch with the mayor's office so we can write her a check to fix her vehicle?
And you are how, we, well, you, you are saying you want her to do so or are you trying to initiate to help me understand?
And we'll pay for those, those damages. We have business in Highland Park.
Okay, you are Mr. Jackson. Okay, I'm a little bit confused, but I'm sure we can work this out. You're saying to tell the woman whose vehicle was damaged, you are a business owner and you want that person to reach out to the mayor so that you can pay for it?
Exactly.
Okay, then what I would suggest that you do is to reach out to the mayor's office. I'm not the only conduit I can be is a, as a voice conduit tonight. You'd have to really reach out to the mayor and.
That's what I'm saying. Reach out to the mayor's office and she just reaches out to the mayor's office to connect those fuses.
Wow, okay, ma'am. So you got a guardian angel. Somebody wants to.
Come on.
Come on.
Mister Jack, uh, Mister Jackson, I will caution you that, um, um, people here are. So, yeah, uh, so I have, I real, I have a real problem with over-promising and under-delivering. And so I hope that you can do that, because people, we get our feelings hurt a lot, because people promise us stuff and they never come through. But I'm gonna take you at your word. I admire you for trying to do so, but please reach out to the mayor's office and, uh, and make that a reality if you so choose. Thank you very much, Mister Jackson. Okay, we have. Okay, thank you. I think we have one more person, Mister Spite. Okay. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna put the two minutes on you.
Okay, put the two minutes on. I just want to say, uh, I was on my way to the car and I had to turn around. The tree stump is still outside from two years ago.
Are you gonna do us like that?
I mean, y'all could have had a light show. I mean, the tree lights everywhere with the stump. No, just joking. But the, the, the grass in front of our marquee, which is welcome to Highland Park, that Park of Pride and we have Highland Park donated, or, you know, to the, to the, uh, to the city. Or that park, rather, we can't give the city to the park. The grass is crazy. Now, I'm a landscaper, I can cut it. But if I cut it, am I liable for damages and things happen to my? I got, I got, uh, a last.
Prove you.
Yeah, right.
Go there, Mister.
It looks terrible.
We understand, but I think the mayor said earlier about the equipment being fixed and so that they were starting to work back again on cutting. She also said to contact different districts and see how we can help you with the light show. I, I'm aware of the stump, so please, just, we'll talk.
Okay, so, um, the, the, the grass is on the list. For our marquee, people ride down, they say welcome to Highland Park, and they see the grass looking crazy.
It's on the list, but we'll talk.
Yes.
Okay, have a great night.
Miss Fry? All right.
Miss Fry again. Um, thank you, city council, for, um, really, um, listening about the land bank. I think this, that was a very important thing. I noticed Miss Scott said that, um, they would give you, what, back in twenty twenty-five? What would they give you back?
She was saying the land would transfer back.
Transfer back.
If they have not developed.
But it's gonna be developed. Everything is gonna, a house.
We don't know, so we want it in writing.
Yes.
Yes, I think that's a wise decision. Um, also, I want to thank everyone for participated in the Juneteenth, uh, parade and around ninety's, ninety's cafe. Everything was a success. With Desmond Petty, uh, who's been doing, um, Juneteenth for many, many years. And he shared it with us in Highland Park. We had a wonderful time. And thank you to the police department and the mayor. I saw you in a car. Thank you. I wish you would have came and gave a speech. But anyway, it was a wonderful thing and the city council members that I saw all around there. I really appreciate y'all. Till next time.
You're welcome.
To the point where, is get to the point where without you, I will miss you, bruh. Come on, if you weren't here, I, I, I was, if you didn't show up, I would be looking for you.
I was just gonna ask Sanford Williams.
Yes, sir, Mister Williams.
I was just wondering, how long does it take to purchase property that's owned by Highland Park?
That is an excellent question, Mister Williams, and I wish I had a good answer. I know. It's, it's not that, sadly, it's not that simple. I wish it was. It's, I, as, as many people as I've asked, no one has provided me with a simple explanation. All I can tell you is that for the last decade, for the last decade, there's been an issue with selling property in the city of Highland Park.
Are you trying to purchase a building to, to do a sports venue for the kids?
That's, 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 my, my project.
Bowling alley.
So I just wanted to buy the property.
So one, yes, one thing I would say, and I'm Miss, Miss Pro, Madam Protona and Miss Man. Um, after listening, I took notes on you. One thing that might be challenging with our city, big developers have this problem, is to have a project contingent on land sale to start your development. There's this giant means facility over there. They went through a lot of, the machine chewed up a lot. As, as, it's been mentioned, so, so.
I'm gonna try to build nothing on it. I just want to buy the land.
I wish, it was, I wish it was easier, because your frustration is.
Because it's like the only city I'm having a problem buying land in.
Brother, if I could explain it to you any better, I swear I would.
I mean, they got back to me, they told me how much it was. I said, I'll pay that right now, but I'm still waiting.
So.
Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
The process for buying land, there's two things that's going on right now. One, to buy land, and it's not a side lot, is they must have a plan for development for it. You would have to go with your plan to the planning commission on what you're going to do with that, that land. So we don't, we don't just sell the land and it just sit. We have to have, especially if it's, if it's not a side lot adjacent to someone's home, which we can sell to them. But if it's a, say it's a, say it's lots on Hamilton, those are commercial lots and those lots have to have a development plan. So if you have not presented a, a development plan on what you're going to do with those lots, that might be part of the process. Other thing is, we have brought things to the council at the beginning of their term, with the term, and then it was saying, well, we've just getting these, and now we haven't had any conversations. So there has been no workshops. I, I'm just being honest. We tried to get them to the workshops. There's been no workshops. There are some that, uh, a lot of people have ready to go, which are side lots. Also, our charter does not allow us to sell property that has homes on them, because we have to have an auction process. And so that process is still being worked on to get to that auction process. And so that's the areas of how you, how you buy or purchase. We have commercial properties, which has to have a development plan. We have housing, uh, properties that have houses on it that have to go to an auction. This is how our charter was written. This is what we have to go by along with the ordinances that, uh, 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 that, uh, address those things and stuff. If you have a house and you're trying to purchase a side lot, they can put that in, but when we bring it, you need to have information. So we add that sometimes some of these things we talk about at a workshop. And at this time, you're not saying you consider workshops. So bring stuff for us. We don't have these problems at the council meeting when they say we don't have the information or we just get. So that's what the problem has been since this administration has taken over.
So Mister Williams.
I'm sorry, Mister, Mister Hinton has quite a few properties, uh, side lot properties that need to be moved. And so now that we know that you will entertain a workshop, uh, so that the, uh, council members can be a broader breadth of what properties or, or whatever it is they need to ask questions about before they get to the floor. That way we will save time on the, uh, at the meeting and they already have information and questions to ask.
So Williams, I'm gonna stop you by saying, this process of having a development plan, have you purchased property in the city of Detroit before from the land bank?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and in that process, did they just sell it to you?
No, I sent them with development, just like I sent Mister Hinton development.
Okay, so then, I, since we're over our two-minute time and we need to get to council affairs, I appreciate you coming here, because you're trying to do business in our city. And I apologize for the frustrations that you're feeling. And it's no consolation that those of us who are residents who've invested here have also experienced those same frustrations. We have been in a, in a, we were frozen in place for almost a decade, where there are a lot of things that should have or could have taken place, but the process was obstructed for whatever reason. And I really can't speculate on, it's just that happened in the past. You do have people in front of you now who are at least willing to try and entertain people like yourself. Our city cannot grow if we don't get people like you to come and invest in it. So, right, and I don't, and I don't want to, and I don't want to frustrate you away. We're over our two-minute and I gotta get into council affairs. But I don't want you to be frustrated away from your, from your drive to be here. And I do thank you, I thank you for coming back. So we're gonna move into, uh, council affairs.
Just one real quick, it's, it's a safety thing. It's a thing called happening right in front of my house. I took pictures. That's it, that's it.
Yes, ma'am. Chief, you have something?
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Chief, if you would.
Okay, uh, first, let me, uh, apologize. It's the police department's responsibility to ensure the safety of council and the citizens at this meeting. And, um, you know, we can't have people just approaching council and we can't have people approaching citizens. We can have verbal disagreements, um, we can, we can have, you know, verbal dialogue here, but we can't approach council. So, um, we'll be looking to make some security adjustments before the next meeting to where people can't just approach, um, you know, because I, I, I have no idea what their intentions are. This individual, we are able to identify, so, um, you know, we can deal with that, but, um, in the future, we, we will make efforts to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Also, um, last meeting, I, I gave a commitment to one of the citizens that I would, uh, that I would share crime stats. And, um, it's important to me that I give you our crime stats as accurate as possible. So it took, took a little bit, because we're, we've, we've got some new software that we're working on. But, um, you know, it's, it's not my job to manipulate these numbers to make me look good. It's my job to give you guys the actual facts. And, um, so with that being said, I, I did make a commitment to one of the citizens and I would share them, so I want to make sure I do that. Um, in twenty twenty-three, we have had five homicides this year, um, which is very unfortunate. One was a high-profile case where three individuals, uh, were found in Highland Park and is believed they were murdered in Highland Park. Um, the other two, um, one was recent. It happened at one of our hotels. And one was an individual who unfortunately tried to do what he thought was right. He heard, uh, someone breaking into his car, he believed, and he confronted him and unfortunately it cost him his life. So I encourage all the citizens to, to please not confront people. I know how difficult it is. But allow us to get there and at least, um, you know, assess the situation before you come out and confront anyone. Um, because I certainly wouldn't want this to happen to anyone else, over property especially. We've had eight, um, they're called criminal sexual conduct, which could be anything from unwanted touching to some sort of, um, you know, sexual penetration. Uh, so we've had eight of those. We've had nine robberies. Most of them are, um, just strong-arm robberies. They weren't armed robberies, but they were, um, they happen typically at bus stops, as we're seeing people are, um, stopping people and, uh, you know, and robbing them at a bus stop and, and leaving. So we, we have stepped up enforcement at some of our, um, most populated bus stops. Uh, we had three carjackings. We've been pretty successful in apprehending suspects in, in carjackings. Uh, thanks to the assistance of other agencies as well as, as well as our officers. Um, we've had sixty-four non-aggravated assaults. So that is basically, it could be anything from someone expecting, you know, you're, you're, you have the ability to assault someone. You're in their space unwanted, um, that is considered a non-aggravated assault. Battery is the portion where you actually make contact with someone. Um, so that number is, is pretty high. Um, you know, unfortunately, people are quick to, to get in people's faces and, and threaten them, um, which is part of what I'm talking about today. We, we've got to do better on our security. Now aggravated felonious assaults, we had forty. However, as bad as that number is in comparison to last year, this time we had nearly sixty. Uh, so we are down, um, we have, we have stepped up enforcement in the, in the streets. And a lot of those we were seeing in, um, in neighborhoods, unfortunately, people, you know, um, people, um, getting, getting assaulted in, in, in neighborhoods. Um, non-fatal shootings, we've had three of them. That's basically someone, you know, shot at someone, they might have hit him in the leg. Um, but they, obviously they didn't result in a fatal injury. Burglary, we had, um, twenty of them. That includes, um, we had a incident where we had an individual, um, in the area of Moss. Uh, he broke into several garages, several, um, we believe he may have broken into several buildings. However, we were able to apprehend him. And, uh, so that then, uh, played a huge role in, in, um, our reduction. This time last year, we, we had twenty-six, uh, by comparison. Motor vehicle thefts, we've had forty-nine. So forty-nine is a high number and it, it plays a role in our insurance costs. So what I need people to do is if you hear someone or you see someone wander around in the early morning hours or the late night hours, give us a call. Let us check it out. If it turns out to be nothing, it's not a big deal. But it could potentially be, you know, someone getting, getting ready to steal a car. And, and we're looking to, to reduce those numbers. Um, fraud, we've had about eighteen fraud cases, uh, to date. Fraud, um, the number one victim thus far has really been senior citizens, um, they're being taken advantage of. So if you have, uh, some senior loved ones, you know, please, please advise them on the, on the, the technology scams that people are using today, um, asking for money, you know, saying that your relatives in jail and they need bond money and, and all these various schemes. You know, let, let people know that, you know, government's not going to call them directly. Banks aren't going to call them directly and ask for their, their security numbers. Um, you know, just, just advise, um, you know, your senior relatives. Um, we've had some liquor violations, uh, local businesses where, where we've, uh, sanctioned them um, for violating the, local liquor laws. Weapons offenses, we had a thirty-one weapons offenses to date. Um, the majority of those were individuals who were unlawfully carrying a weapon concealed and, um, they were all, uh, arrested and charged. We've had, um, twenty-five, um, drunk driving arrests or operating while intoxicated. So that could be narcotics as well. All those individuals, uh, have been charged with those crimes as well. Um, another big thing that, that we're seeing, um, is drug overdose. And, um, unfortunately, I see a lot of good people that, for whatever reason, have gotten hooked on prescription drugs and that turns into, um, a litany of other problems. If you know someone who's struggling, you know, there's a lot of programs that you can reach out. We are bringing in, um, someone from the state. We're gonna host some, some, uh, events at, at our building to where citizens can have access to, um, Narcan, which, um, helps if anyone's overdosing on opioids. And we're trying to educate everyone on that and make it available, easily available to anyone. And also let it be known, a lot of people are concerned about calling the police if there is an overdose or a drug-related incident. At, at that very moment, the only concern is to save that individual's life. We're not looking to put together a criminal case. Um, you know, we're not charging a good Samaritan who comes forward and, and tells us, you know, that their friend overdosed while they were using. You know, we, we've got to stop these overdoses and we can't do it without the help of, of, of everybody. So please don't think that, you know, our goal is to lock someone up who's overdosing, because it's not. Our goal is ultimately to help them and provide them with resources. So, um, one other promise I said, I would say, uh, I told her I would tell her the, um, the, the hotspots, I guess we would call them. So, um, the mobile gas station in Little Caesar's is, I mean, this is obvious. There are a lot of loitering going on there. A lot of, um, petty theft. Um, hopefully some of that will stop now that the, uh, the shelter's not as occupied. Larceny from auto, this is people going in, you know, if you got unlocked door, they go in, ransack your car, break your window, ransack your car. We're seeing a lot of that in the area of, um, Second and Third between Manchester and Sears. Um, so residents in that area, again, if you see someone walking around late at night, um, looking into cars or walking near cars, don't hesitate to call us. Like I said, it's not the end of the world if we get there and it's nothing. Um, I'd rather deal with that than deal with, uh, someone, you know, suffering a loss of personal property. Um, Six Mile and John R. were experiencing a lot of narcotics complaints. Um, so that's something we're, we're gonna monitor. We actually have, um, the flock cameras that were approved by council, um, so narcotic sales, if you're utilizing a vehicle, we, we should be able to monitor that as well. Um, and we're trying to partner with the gas station to become a, um, blue light member, uh, which means we can monitor the facility from, from our police department. And, uh, thus far they seem to be on board, so I think we will be moving on that, uh, relatively soon. Assaults, we were seeing assaults in the area of, uh, Six Mile and John R. and Davison and Woodward area. Um, a lot of it, again, I think is associated with, um, with bus stops and petty theft. A lot of it again, I think is associated with, um, with bus stops and petty theft. Um, but those are the hotspots for those. So, uh, just thank you for, yes.
Do you have, um, like a hotline or a direct line to call if you like to spot crime?
So we have a direct line to our police department, um, which we can share that with everyone. It's, it's, uh,
An emergency number?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 313-852-7338.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, real quick, uh, for anybody living in District Three, I have funding for you from our CDACs. I need you to tell me how you want this money spent. I, I will not make a decision on my own. I need to hear from the people that are living in my district, how they wish to have this money allocated. There will be no $45, uh, a hundred garbage cans for one block. Okay, so, I tell you, having said that, uh, the next subject I have is, um, I would like to have, I would like to make a motion, um, Council President, to have a discussion about outside attorney, uh, put on the agenda, uh, at the next workshop at next council meeting.
So that's something that we can.
That's not something that I would want to put on a workshop. I want to make sure that you get that directly into the legal department so that you can get that right on the agenda. As far as a workshop, so whatever the, whatever the basis for your desire is, that can go straight onto a meeting agenda. You don't even have to, to go through the workshop process. We'll say the workshop are things that are not, you are, that we are not absolutely certain of. It sounds as if you're absolutely certain this is something that you want to do. So let's cut the fat and get straight to the meat. Let's get the resolution written and then get that added as an agenda item.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Burton, are you going to take care of that? Or do I have to, uh, assume that it's going to be some of my?
You have to reach out to her, I'm certain, at least have a conversation about it.
Well, we'll talk after the meeting. Okay. If you're declaring a bona fide dispute, then why would the legal department write a resolution for you?
I would rather sit down and workshop and discuss it, but clearly nobody wants to talk.
You haven't, haven't called me.
I just made a motion to discuss it at workshop.
We could talk after the meeting.
Yeah.
I could talk about.
So, so the workshop, the work, the workshop for July already has two. I'm not going to have any more than two items on it because that's a lot. So we have, so we already have two for the first one in July. And I'm going to do it on a case by case basis.
Number three, um, I'd like to make a motion to launch a full scale investigation into the theft, embezzlement and loss of city owned property in the city of Highland Park. I want a full scale investigation. We done had a lot of property that has left this city that did not come through council. They ended up in, in, they, they, they ended up in the state land bank. And I want to know how we got there and who approved it. And I have a very long list of those properties and I want a full scale investigation. I make a motion, uh, to, I, I make a motion to launch a full scale investigation into the theft of our property in the city of Highland Park because we definitely got a land grab that's going on here, okay?
A second.
So what we doing here, y'all? We making a motion to do it, to, to launch an investigation?
Yes, uh, a motion to launch an investigation into the theft, embezzlement and loss of city owned property without the approval of council.
A second.
Okay, before we go, uh, so we have a second. So I have a question. What timeframe are we looking at? We looking at from when we took our oath of office to today?
No, 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 no. We, we're looking at not only from when the time we took our office, but some of this happened, a great deal of this happened in, in the last administration. And we need to get to the bottom of it and we need to figure out how we're going to get that property back. If what has been done is what I think has been done, then we have a serious issue here. And the people who are still here working have some questions they need to answer for us.
So are we taking motions?
You know, Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Why don't you put those concerns that you have in writing?
Right.
It's hard to just say we're conducting an investigation without more.
That's not hard to say at all, Mrs. Burton.
No.
Okay, it's, it's, it's very simple.
You have a turn to list.
We need to get to the bottom of what happened to the properties that left this city without this council's approval or without the previous council approval. Property has been given to the Michigan State Land Bank without anybody knowing about it. And they're circumventing us and the residents because you're the ones that's losing out here. This is property that you could have had. They gave this stuff away without our approval and without our knowledge. And I want to know why that is.
I have a question for you, sir. Who's going to conduct specifically? Who would you say will be responsible for conducting the investigation? Um, I don't know, and that's why I'm asking. So who will be responsible parties?
So you got two options.
Point of order, hold on. Before you ask him to answer that question and start naming names.
So we just take a vote?
No, we shouldn't take a vote either because he's, he's, he's making a, I'm not saying he's not telling the truth, but he's making an allegation. It's, it's out here. I would prefer, just like he asked in the very beginning, a workshop to discuss it. Sit down with the terms, whoever needs to be do, because you, we cannot continue to just state people's name and state claims because I don't appreciate.
I ain't said none of that.
No, no.
You said previous administration.
I, I made a general statement and there's a motion on the floor.
It is a motion, but before he asks you, he asked you a question, Mr. Shafi.
Okay.
And I didn't want, I didn't want you to, I didn't want you to.
He asked me another question as well.
So either way, I'm not, I, I don't appreciate. And it's not necessarily directed at you, but it's directed at everybody out there who wants to sue for money. I don't appreciate somebody coming here and, and serving me because one of us said it or one of us stated it on TV or on, I don't appreciate it. So before we start saying people's names or accusing, we need to be very sure. And so it may not be, this is not the area for that to me. And I know you asked for a workshop, so I think we should have a workshop.
I did not, again, and just like this pending lawsuit, I didn't say anybody's name. Just like the pending one that we got now. Okay, and you know which one I'm talking about. I didn't say that name. If you look back at the minutes, it was your mayor that said that name. I didn't say it.
It's on video record.
Okay, so all I'm saying, all I'm saying.
Statement, you did mention his name. It's on record and has been proven.
We need, we, we, we need to launch an investigation into the loss, theft and embezzlement of city owned property. I don't see how complicated that is and you got an option. We, we can either, we can either.
Confirm lost theft or embezzlement.
Handle it internally. We can either handle it internally or I can go ahead and reach out to this, to the, to the state police and have them handle it.
So, so again, we don't know, an investigation is to determine if said accusation is true. We don't know.
You the opportunity to handle it internally.
This is not, no, I, I will prefer you having a conversation with the attorneys before you do so.
I, I will reach out to the state there.
Okay.
Council President.
Miss, yeah, we're going to move on to council affairs. Ms. Martin, will you be up next after the chief, please?
I was just going to make a suggestion. Councilman Shafi, as a council member, can certainly file a local police report with us. And you can provide that information that, that you have. We can conduct a local investigation. If it appears that there's anything, uh, of any criminality to it, then at that point, we would reach out to the Attorney General's Office, forward our findings to them and, and subsequently warrant requests could be drafted from that point.
Thank you, because you will have.
So the chief just made.
You'll have addresses, you'll have the suspected property.
So the chief just made an excellent suggestion that's handling internally so we can continue with the motion that's on the floor. It's still on the floor.
Members?
It, it has to go on anywhere.
Ready for vote?
Do you have any additional questions on this?
Council President, I will.
Hold on a second, Madam Mayor. Miss, what is this motion that's stated on the record?
To launch a full scale internal investigation into the loss, theft and embezzlement of city owned property.
Now, just from my own point of clarity, when you say full scale investigation, that would include, we have to spell it out just for, for all of us to understand.
Council President, please, there's a motion on the floor. Can we vote, please?
Yes, but I want to make sure I know what I'm voting on.
I've stated what I've stated.
Council President, I have a question.
He's not going to do that, so.
You can choose the right to not vote. You can say yes or no. I made the statement I've made.
Can I ask a question? Yes, I need to ask a question. So you're saying that somebody out of your mouth embezzled, stole and transferred property? These are accusations that's not, have not been founded, but that's what you're saying? And so it should be, it should be that. I think that, I think the thing should be that you would like to look into property that has been transferred to the state land bank. And by who? Not a accusation, because again, a accusation leads to lawsuits. And so you accused a previous administration. You said for doing administration, previous administration, there's been no property sold here at this time. But I'm trying to find out, when you make those accusations, Councilman, and you use terminology that can get the city sued again, and we are already in multiple lawsuits? You have to make sure that.
Again, Madam Mayor, that's why I made the motion for an investigation.
So we're going to go ahead.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I, I'm not, I'm, that's all I'm saying is when you make.
Hold on a second, Madam Mayor. Ma- Madam Mayor, hold on. What we do here is recorded live. There is no dispute. What comes out of our mouths, there is no way to get it back in our mouths. So what was stated here will be on the record.
Okay.
Go back and watch it later on. What was stated here on the record, it is, there's no dispute about, we can't, we can't have our own opinion on what occurred. If someone made a statement, if they said the words, they're out of their mouth. And so we have a motion on the floor. Let's go ahead and get this motion voted on. I can, I can see litigation coming from this statement.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am, please.
Don't we speak in resolutions, right? It doesn't have to be in writing?
There, again, again, there's nothing.
Didn't we just?
We did.
Establish that in the very beginning of this meeting? It has to be in writing?
Yes.
That should be.
Yes, that should be.
And I was just telling him, he's giving all these accusations, aware that they're writing in terms of who he's talking about. The type period he's talking about.
Exactly, the same advice, the same advice that we offered to you, ma'am. The same advice that we offered to you because we wanted to make sure that the item that you wanted to discuss was properly framed. Was properly framed.
Offered, that's a perfect solution. Internally, there it is.
Okay, fine, so we have a motion on the floor. This is during council affairs.
Do we need a motion for, for a report to be?
No.
Okay, got it.
So we, are we still, are we still moving forward with this motion that's on the floor?
Absolutely.
Fine, then. Mr. Shafi, would you just state the motion for the record? Madam Clerk, to make sure that you have it written down. He's, he's asking for a motion to launch a, go ahead, sir, I'm going to let you use your own word.
I, I want to read, I don't want to vote on this.
You just say yes or no.
I don't, I don't want to vote because.
Stay.
Thank you. Then I abstain.
You have to get.
No, because if, if we, I need to have something in writing.
We offered the same advice to him, ma'am.
Don't we need something in writing for this?
He won't rescind his motion.
He won't.
He's not rescinding his.
What's that, Chief?
Ma'am, ma'am, you second it, you can rescind your second and then.
I rescind my second.
Okay, so we don't have a second.
There we go.
So I, I would encourage you to probably not make this motion because that involves this entire body right now. I encourage you as a citizen and as a council member to file your complaint with the police department. Allow us to look into it. We can, we'll get all of the documents, interview all of the parties that are involved in any sales of property. And we will be able to support whatever decision we make. If for some reason we were to find criminality, at that point, we would subcontract that out to the Attorney General's Office based on, um, public corruption.
Okay, Chief.
All right. Okay, all right, that's it. If that was our final.
Motion at this time.
Thank you, madam. Um, Ms. Martin, for council affairs, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Burton, thank you so very much earlier for saving me for myself. I appreciate that so much. Also, I want to say, I'm, I'm noticing everything is a process. However, I'm wondering, when are we going to get to the point where we're proactive instead of always reactive? I'm wondering when we're going to get to that point. And then in saying that, my next question is, what would be the process of doing a workshop? If we wanted to have a workshop, what's the present, uh, what's the process for that?
Process is emailing council president. So let me, let me make this clear to answer your question. The workshop is not part of the charter.
Right.
The workshop was created by previous city council presidents as a way to open up a productive, key word, productive dialogue among members on specific topics determined by city council president. I suspended the workshop. Over the past four months, we haven't, as a body, myself included, been able to produce good governance behaviors. We were all over the media. We couldn't even focus on the things to run the city that were required just to move the needle on our administrative function. So I was not going to entertain a workshop at all. I was not going to do it at all because I didn't have any faith in this body to be able to practice good governance. Excuse me, sir, I never interrupted you. So that's, that's the purview of the city council president. Whoever sits in this chair manages the workshop. Now, the things that I have allocated for workshop attention are things, structural things related to our property, related to the structure of the city that need to be moved forward. Those things, in my opinion, merit a workshop. And as we go on reintroducing the workshop for July, it'll be on a case to case basis. Let's just be honest, everybody ain't been playing nice. So you can't throw dirt in my face and then expect me to entertain a workshop on a topic that you choose. So I felt it was appropriate to send those workshops out until we got to the point where we had issues that all of us agreed were relevant to discuss in a workshop. And I think we found some. I'll wait. I think we found some that we all agree that we need to sit down and discuss, particularly these issues related to the disposition of property in the city. It is a sticking point. It has been a sticking point for a decade. As we move forward, if we find other things that we all five mutually agree on and that I believe we can have a productive conversation on, those things will be in a workshop. I can promise you that. But this is not going to be a set, a session where we come in here and ask people to have resumes and credentials and then we bring them to the podium and punch them in the face. That's not going to happen. That's not going to happen. So I, I conduct myself in these meetings the same way that I do in my professional career. It's not the first time I've had coworkers I didn't get along with. But I am not going to create a pugilist section among the people that I work with. For the, for, for not for my personal benefit, not for yours either. So we have important items that we need to deal with in the near future related to the disposition of property. So those items will be on the list. In, after the budget is, after the new budget year starts, I just received a copy of the Blight ordinance. After I've read it and after all of you have read it and we've talked to the attorneys, that's something that needs to be discussed openly in a workshop. So you asked me what the criteria was, that's the best explanation that I have. And I'll root you, your time, your time back.
Okay, so it's basically your decision and everything I just heard, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly the case. That's what the workshop is coming from. That's how it was created. That's how it's always been since the workshop has existed. Miss, uh, Dr. Omar, I believe is the author of that. So it's always been that way. You have any more?
Got it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Manica.
I don't know, I'll be honest, I just kind of was just thrown from everything that just, this has happened. But I think whether anybody realized it or not, the last two meetings, we've actually had technically a better council meeting. You don't have to agree, you don't even have to see it.
There you go.
But we've had a better council meeting where we agreed on some things. All of us agreed on some things. So we all got to start looking at the fact that we are, the, how small it is, I don't care, that it's happening. So we are starting to think, to, to work at some stuff. Yes, we have some things that maybe we're not thinking and not working at, but you got to see the, the good stuff that is happening. You don't have to want to see it, but I have to, to continue to come here every single Monday, Tuesday and be here to the type of late hours we are being here. Okay, I want to thank everybody who participated. I enjoy going out to the Juneteenth and anything else. You may not see me at some stuff, I may just come through. I thank the people that are, are coming out to receive some funding, um, to, um, hopefully get their water bills, things taken care of. There is some education that has to be done with getting resources and services that our citizens don't understand. Um, because there are some little, I think earlier someone said, um, sometimes you don't get all the information and that definitely happens with resources. People don't get all the information. You just know, you seen Johnny next door that you getting the roof fixed and he said it came through this, but you don't know what the entire program is. I would like to thank the water department for working so hard with the programs to help with water and just working period on everything that we're asking. Uh, I just want to thank everybody for working hard because I don't know if anybody realized how hard. I just want to thank everybody for working hard because I don't know if anybody realized how hard this seems to be. And and it really doesn't have to. I thank Ms. Square for listening when listening to the little things. For example, with the land bank, she heard the ask, can you go find it? She found it. You know, everybody may not have heard it. But we do definitely have to start to think about what we're saying and how we saying it and also think about the other people in the room. And if also if we listen, we won't be asking the same questions either. We won't continue to ask the same questions. Going forward, we are looking at, definitely, we're, he's gone, but we're going to help. And we're considering about the lighting, Christmas tree lighting, just making the property look better. So I am definitely looking into that with my CACs as well as just going to invite others to participate. There is some legalities that's in that asking people to volunteer. So going forward, please, again, be patient. Please don't come to beat us up. We are trying and we cannot, we cannot be the the sounding, well, we are the sounding board, but you can't beat us up for stuff that we didn't do. You just really can't. Just bring it to us so we can research it and find it, but don't make it that you, that makes it hard for us. I don't know if you understand, that makes it hard. And I'm not up here for the money by far. That's the first time you let me make that statement. That's the first time you made that statement. But you make it difficult because we do want to serve you. We want to get it right. So again, I'm going to ask that. Okay, and I'm also asking that of my colleagues. I think all of us want to get it right or we want to do something to make it better. We just got to know what's the difference between personal and business? Personal and business. I have a lot of personal feelings. I promise you, I keep them in. I promise you. We got to start keeping our personal in and handling business. Everybody have a good night. I'm not going to get up, but everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Proton.
Yes. I miss my pastor being here tonight. I love you guys. Thank you for being here. As the president stated, he has the privy to give us a workshop. I have emailed him and asked for workshops and was denied. I just want to state that for the record. I wanted to introduce our portion of the Joe Louis Greenway. That workshop was denied. As Mr. Stanford said, he has proposals. Mr. Juan, who owns Woodward Avenue Bar and Grill, he has proposals. Mr. Ty Hinton has their proposals and all of their information. There have been denied workshops because of the president's privy to have them. I want to state that for the record. I love you guys. And have a good night.
Thank you very much. So let me just reiterate this. The workshops are the purview of the city council president. They were not a part of the charter. They're nowhere in the charter. They're nowhere in the charter. There's something that was made up by the previous city council person as a framework. Okay, and that's one of the few, the same, the same responsibilities also come with just a few privileges, which is whether or not you want to devote the additional attention on items when we can't show good governance. And my priority as a chair is to make sure that members' proposals, whether I agree with them or not, are brought forward properly so that they can be addressed. Mr. Shafi, are you leaving the meeting?
No, I'm not leaving.
Okay, would you mind, we'll adjourn shortly. Would you mind taking a seat? I know, we're in the middle of a meeting, sir. So when you experience things like this, you know, so I want to, having concluded all business of the city of Highland Park and finished all agenda items, I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm motion, I'm moved to adjourn the meeting.
Second, all those in favor?